All right, well, it's five thirty-two. We'll go ahead and get things called to order here. Welcome, everybody. It is April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and this is the April work session of the Monroe County Council, so we'll get called to order here. We'll quickly do a roll call vote of council members present here at the beginning of the meeting, and then we'll recognize those who join us a little bit later if they're not here now. So please unmute your mics and state your name when I call your name for the role, please. Mr. Deckard.
Here.
Ms. Hawke. Mr. Iverson.
Here.
Mr. McKim.
Here.
Ms. Munson. And Ms. Wilts.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have five of the seven of us here, certainly constitutes a quorum, and we'll move forward. Ms. Munson and Ms. Hawke, join us. We'll recognize that they've joined us at that point in the meeting. Next will be adoption of our agenda. Our agenda was posted to the Monroe County Government website. It's there currently. I've got one modification that I'd like to make. I received a request from one of our departments, Ms. Purdy, and so I'd like to move item six just ahead of their, so item six is a request approval to hire at the midpoint, so I'd like to move that just ahead of their item nine on the agenda, which will be our discussion with the commissioner. So if there's no objections, I'd like to make that modification to the agenda. Does anybody else have any other changes or modifications to our agenda tonight? Are there any objections to the one change? Okay, so we'll move forward with the agenda as amended, and so next up will be item three. That's our department updates. Yes, Ms. Shell, did you have a question?
We need to take a vote on the amendment to the agenda.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Okay. On the motion to amend the agenda to move item six to before number nine. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor, oh, she's not here. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
And she's not there. Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Absolutely. Okay, so up next then is item three. That's our department updates, and we always have financial manager Bree Gregory join us for, from the auditor's office. Welcome, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. A few things today. First, we've been working on our gap report, which is, um, the deadline is approaching. It's due the end of May. So it's progressing well, and we're in good shape there. If you have any specific questions, feel free to contact me anytime on that. CARES, the Business and Social Service Organization Assistance Program is coming to a close this week. The deadline is April thirtieth for any applications, and of course, like the accompanying documentation as well. So we're wrapping that up. Um, there's currently a remaining appropriation of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars in the COVID business and social service line. That's after expending three hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents out of the five hundred thousand dollar appropriation to date. There might be a little bit of flexibility with that. I know there's some other COVID money available and some other lines, so. We will update you further once that program does come to a close and give you the exact numbers. Revenue report, you are in receipt of two reports from me this month. The first is your usual report that you received with the normal fund information. Second, I also provided a revenue comparison report, um, which originally just had, you know, comparison of the fund. I added some detail and sent to you, which I'm sure you have not had time to review because I sent it around four-thirty, so I'll look forward to any comments or questions you have on that, and that is about all I have for you today unless you have questions.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Gregory, and just for our minutes, I want to note that Counselor Munson joined us during Ms. Gregory's update there, and so she is, she's here in present for the meeting. Let's check with counsel now and see if there are any questions or any discussion on Ms. Gregory's update from the auditor's office. Any questions from Ms. Gregory? All right, doesn't appear so. Well, thank you very much for, for the regular updates. We appreciate that, and if, if anyone hasn't had a chance yet to review the materials that were sent out earlier this afternoon, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, um, Commissioner Thomas did provide a little update in the notes. The care, I misspoke. The CARES funding to date is per number, the eight hundred and eighty-one thousand. However, year to date was the number I provided, just for clarification.
Got it. I got it. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Very good. Well, we'll be in touch if there's any questions on, on the materials that were sent out earlier this afternoon. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks again.
And Commissioner Thomas has also added here that the last update on township assistance funding a few weeks ago had a total expenditure of eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars to assist one hundred and forty-eight households. So that's all great to hear as well. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Any other department updates that we have this evening? It looks like Ms. Purdy has joined us. Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, good evening, and thank you for moving that item because I'm gonna do some running around.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it. So a follow-up to Ms. Gregory's report, providing an update on the use of the other monies that were appropriated using the county's COVID CARES reimbursement for the public safety and health personnel. So just to kind of give you an update on the account titled Emergency Supplies, you gave us an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have expended six thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. The account titled Contractual, you appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand. We have expended one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents. I know that some of the expenses are also being shared with a grant from the state with the Health Department, but I also want to point out that we, the City of Bloomington and Indiana University both contributed a hundred, a hundred dollars each. So we have two hundred thousand that we will probably be requesting an additional for that particular line as we go through the rest of the year. The next line, just titled Emergency Services Housing, you appropriated three hundred thousand. We have expended twenty-five, and that was for Beacon and United Way for the recipients of those. And let's see, okay, an account for the food bank, you appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and at this point, we have not provided any funds to date, but we do anticipate a request from Pantry Two Seventy-Nine. And then I also want to let you know that Account Emergency Response, it was actually used last year to support local businesses, and we had encumbered three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars plus. We actually have thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents remaining in that particular line. So I would ask Jill or Bree to do a transfer and, and within category transfer and put that into the business social services line as that one's getting a little bit narrower. I wanted to add this to you guys because the commissioners are aware the request that remain may exceed the balance that remains in this business social service line. They're also concerned there may be a need for rental assistance with, when the new federal moratorium on abictions ends, and I understand it's been extended to the end of June. Also, and I didn't know this, I found it recently, I thought you might want to know this too. The Federal Assistance Program states those who need rental assistance should reach out to their local housing authority to find out if they qualify, and so I did a quick little search because anybody who's seeking that kind of assistance can go to the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority and apply, and I think they didn't provide any local contacts for that on the state's website, but other than this particular Indiana housing, and it is an Indiana.gov website. That is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Purdy, and also just to note during Ms. Purdy's update, Counselor Hawke joined the meeting, so we do have a full, full group here with us tonight, just for the, just to note that in a minute. Okay, so let's check and see if any council members have questions or if there's any discussion on Ms. Purdy's update. Anybody have any questions? Doesn't, yes, Ms. Munson.
Yes. So the State Housing Authority is the, the main contact. But what is, what is the local contact for people?
They didn't provide that. That's, that's kind of what I was trying to say is that the Federal Assistance Program, it tells you, first of all, go to the National Housing and Community National Housing Plan, but then it just took us then to this other one, which titled Indiana Housing and Community Development. Clicked on that, and there's actually an application there that you can fill out, tells you what you need to do, and they also say that if you need assistance filling out the form, you can call two-one-one. They also have on there an email if you have questions about it, and there is also a phone number. I'll give you that if you want it.
And I just have a little more background on that. It appears that only communities with a greater population than two hundred thousand have their own housing authorities to distribute this funding, and so that's, so Indianapolis has their own rental assistance fund, but we're not going to. We're, we, just like Ms. Purdy said, we, we would apply. Our residents would apply through the state.
So I would, is there a plan to promote this information to the public?
Um, well, I just learned it today, so so I, I can't really answer that question, but I would think that we would, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I can, I can, if TSD allows me to share my screen real quick, I can show you, I think, the website that Angie's talking about, and it seems to be pretty designed to be pretty user-friendly, so you can see here that there's a rental assistance portable portal. They're now accepting applications for the Indiana Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which can provide up to twelve months in assistance for past due and ongoing monthly rent and utility payments for qualifying Indiana renters. So they can click there and get more information. So with, that is certainly something we can also put on our website for people. We can share it with our other community partners, but it's an opportunity to use those, those state funds to provide the assistance that people need.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Any other, yes, Ms. Munson.
Continuing on, so the trustees will be able to help connect their, their residents to this portal.
I would presume.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this is actually not a new portal. This benefit was actually begun under the CARES Act. This, the American Rescue Plan just extends and adds additional funding to the program that had already been in place.
Okay.
Great. Are there any other questions? Okay, any, any further discussion for Ms. Purdy? Not, we'll go ahead and close out the department update. Well, we'll check and see if there's any other department updates, but thank you, Ms. Purdy, for joining us. Always good to hear from you, and we'll see you again next time.
Thank you.
Do you have any further department updates for the council this evening? I don't believe we do. Okay, so that will take us then to item four, which is our Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a new position Stormwater Manager in Fund One-One-Nine-Seven dash zero-zero-zero-zero Stormwater Management.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Welcome, Ms. Ridge.
Good evening. So I have gone through the process of the PAC, gone through the WIS process. We did have a PAC meeting, I think it was last week. They did approve for us moving forward for the addition, approval of the new position for Stormwater Inspector. And then also to amend the salary ordinance, but I don't think you've read that yet, so I won't jump ahead.
All right, so I can attest, I was at the PAC meeting as well. I can attest to everything that Ms. Ridge just said there, but I want to give our PAC president an opportunity to, to make some comments or weigh in on this as well, too. Mr. Deckard, did you have any information that you'd like to share with council?
I was just going to share that we appreciate very much, Ms. Ridge, working through PAC and all of our, our processes. This did receive from WIS a recommendation after review, which is what you have before you. This was passed out of PAC on our meeting on April twentieth and is now up for the consideration of this council.
And that, that was unanimous, as I recall.
That is what I recall.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments from council on this request? We've been working on this one for a while. Nice to see everything kind of come together here finally. Yes, Mr. McKim?
I just wanted to make it clear that this was one of the things that we've, when we voted on the, to approach the increase in the stormwater rate, this was certainly one of the important functions that we, we had in mind was creating this position, so it's great to see it move forward.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Is there any public comment on this request? There is no public comment, so we, Ms. Freeman, will do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve a new position in Fund Eleven-Ninety-Seven dash zero-zero-zero-zero. Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yeah.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great, and now we'll move on to item four-B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request to amend the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance in Fund One-One-Nine-Seven dash zero-zero-zero-zero Stormwater Management and add account line One-One-Zero-Six-Seven Stormwater Inspector. Forty hours, pat four exempt.
Second.
All right. Ms. Ridge, any additional information you have for us on this one?
Um, no, not really. If you have any questions, actually, we plan on posting it tomorrow if everything goes good, so we want to get somebody, we're in the middle of construction season, so it's, it's prime time to get somebody hired as soon as possible, so. I know Kelsey's really excited about getting the position filled, and hopefully we can get some good candidates.
I was going to say send our congratulations to Kelsey. I knew she'd be very excited about this.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, any any questions or comments from council? Is there any public comment? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve amending the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance in Fund Eleven-Ninety-Seven dash zero-zero-zero-zero. Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
All right, and up next is item five, our Prosecutor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Prosecutor's request for a category transfer in Fund Nine-One-One-Two dash nine-six-two-one Adult Protective Services in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars from the Services category to the Personnel category.
All right, welcome, Ms. Hamlin.
Good evening, everyone. This is a request I make about every year so that we can spend as much out of this fund before the contract ends. Contract ends June thirtieth of this year, and we're just wanting to move this money over so we can spend it out.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comment? Yes, Ms. Hawke.
Yes, essentially moved it to Personnel. Will it be used for additional hours for the same person, or how will it be used?
No, actually, we don't get enough funding in this from the APS contract. We've been paying our part-time person for several months out of our county general because we were out of funds, but as we get closer to the end of the grant or the, you know, contract cycle, we see that we're going to have money in the thirties, so we're wanting to transfer it over so we can spend it out.
Thank you.
All right.
That was amazing. It's a, it's a sex.
No, this is the Adult Protective Services. Yeah.
You got, you got everything cleared up there, Ms. Hawke?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Comments from council? Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve a category transfer in Fund Ninety-One-Twelve dash ninety-six-twenty-one. Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, and we are going to skip over what's on the agenda here. We amended that earlier in the meeting. The Board of Commissioners request just for Ms. Munson and Ms. Hawke, that was moved to later in the agenda, so we're going to now move to item seven, which is our Correctional Center, and Commander Crowe is here with us to present and review with us the two thousand twenty Correctional Center Annual Jail Report. Welcome, Mr. Crowe. I think we've all received this report, and that was sent to us a couple of weeks ago, as I recall. So everyone should have received that. There was a request from some council members that we just have a public presentation of the report, and Mr. Crowe could kind of go over some of the main highlights of that for us, and we'd have the opportunity to ask any questions or discussion items that might come up, so I'll turn things over to Commander Crowe whenever you are ready to start presenting. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to, to discuss our annual report with you. Indiana Code dictates that we have to have the annual report sent out to a number of different people by the end of March, so we always try to get that done before March thirty-first. And I believe it was March thirty-first when we, this year. As everyone knows, last year was a year to end all years with COVID and everything else that was going on. With that, a lot of things changed within the jail. A lot of our numbers actually went down. But we also had to change a lot of the way we did things, and that increased some of the workflow for staff, increased the stat, or the stress level for staff. And really, it made it a harder year, even though our numbers were down. So just in review a little bit, I'll go over some of the numbers that, that were pretty drastically reduced. The first of those is the booking statistics, the number of people that we book in each year. So in two thousand twenty, we booked in three thousand ninety-two people, and that was down from twenty nineteen at four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine. So there was a period there from March, April, May, that our numbers drastically reduced, and all this had to do with COVID again. I think the stay-at-home orders had a lot to do with this. Police were citing more people, weren't arresting as many people just because they were concerned with the COVID virus coming into the jail as much as we were, so we greatly appreciate that. The top ten bookings, you know, that's something that you can review. Operating While Intoxicated was still the number one, and that's, that's one that's always in the top ten and has been since I've started, since I started here back in the nineties, so that one doesn't change very much. The average inmate population, if you look at twenty nineteen, the average inmate population was two hundred and eighty inmates on any given day, and again, that dropped in two thousand twenty to two hundred and thirty-three. And the real surprise there is April, we dropped down to a hundred and eighty-one inmates, so we have the courts, the judges to thank for that, for reducing our population. Again, trying to keep the people that were in jail safe. That number has gradually risen since April of last year to where we are today, and we're two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty inmates at any given day right now. I will say that even though our numbers every day were lighter than they had been in previous years, previous months, the worst of the worst were still in jail. So our jobs weren't any easier because we had fewer people in jail. In fact, they may have actually, it may have made our jobs harder because, again, we were dealing with the worst people in our community. So we had to spend just as much attention dealing with the inmates that were left in the jail as we did previously with a higher number. And when we get to the mental health aspect, I'll go into that a little bit more, but it seems like those mental health numbers increased. And I think that's something that rose in the general population throughout this epidemic period. Meal costs stayed the same. Again, I have to give a lot of credit to our facility manager, Nikki Ferris. She does a wonderful job of shopping around. We use the same vendors that a lot of the restaurants in Monroe County use, and by doing that, we're able to provide good source of food, quality food at a discounted price, and she always keeps us under budget and is able to prepare, again, good quality food for the inmates. A lot of the jails have went to food services where the meals were prepared somewhere else, and then they're shipped to the facility and then heated up. All of our meals are prepared in-house. A lot of them are handmade. We have biscuits and gravy every Sunday morning. The biscuits are handmade biscuits, and the gravy's pretty much hand, handmade, scratch gravy, so we provide a good service for the inmates. So there's no question about the, the level of food, the quality of food that they're getting. Again, our transport statistics were down. We had nine hundred and ninety-four hours of transports in twenty twenty compared to one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven point nine-seven hours in twenty nineteen. About twenty thousand less miles and hundred and eighty or so less manpower or less man, men, women, whatever, to actually do the transports. With our transports, we, we always send two people on transports just for safety and security precautions. If it's a long transport, it gives one person the opportunity to rest while the other person's driving. More control over the inmate that we're transporting, again, just safety and security, so when you start looking at those numbers, that, that accounts for part of the high numbers for the, the number of officers that go on those transports. Court statistics, again, we were reasonably, well, we were about, we were three thousand, six hundred and eighty inmates to court in twenty twenty compared to seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven in twenty nineteen. Again, with the virus, we had to stop a lot of our in-person courts, so we utilized a lot of technology that we already had. And we just didn't utilize it prior to that. We started to have any, a lot of video conferences, and this has worked out quite well for the Correctional Center. Again, it's reduced our number of hours spent in court, reduced the manpower that we need, that is needed to go to court. But we're still providing the same services. I think there's still some bugs to work out with the video conferencing with the courts, but hopefully that's something that we can accomplish and continue with the video conferences in the future. Excuse me. And again, I have to give a lot of credit and a big thank you to our judges that have worked with us to make this happen, to keep up with the, the constitutional rights of the inmates. You know, again, trying to, to provide the best services we can for what we have going on and the people that we serve. You know, again, trying to provide the best services we can for what we have going on and the people that we serve. Number of in custody deaths, there were zero deaths this past year. One thing to point out with this is staff had a CPR save this year for a person that had attempted suicide. So anytime we can do something like that, you know, it's a great thing for not only the staff, but it shows the inmates that the staff actually care. It shows the community that the staff actually care and are well-trained, going to do what they're supposed to be doing. So that's something that I really like to point out and emphasize that. We had no escapes for 2020. It's also a great thing for us. The number of juveniles increased from two. Excuse me, yeah, there was two in 2019. We had five in 2020, so it increased by three. You can see the charges, if you look at the report, murder, robbery, 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 robbery. So they're very serious crimes. You have to have those type of serious crimes to have a waiver from juvenile court to adult court. And again, whenever we have someone that's under the age of 18 come in, we have to have special priorities for that person. So it also increases the workload, increases time spent with that certain individual. So it just really increases the workload. COVID-19, again, a year to end all years. I think one of the biggest things with COVID-19, we had given 32 rapid tests, and seven of those were positive for six inmates and one officer. And I believe the one officer was me that actually did it. So we did have some inmates that came down with COVID. But I think with our numbers, we did a relatively good job of keeping the virus out of the jail. All the inmates that had COVID or tested positive for COVID, none of them developed serious illness. Most of them were asymptomatic. And the only reason that they were detected is that we came through, had the health department come in and do a series of tests on certain blocks. So again, we're very fortunate that we didn't have anything worse than what we had in the jail for 2020. Fifty-three staff were tested for COVID during 2020, 27 of those tested positive. With that, we had about 1,951 hours that were lost where staff were actually out because of COVID. So we lost some manpower because of that. Again, I think we did a very good job. We instituted some new safety protocols. We had new things installed within the facility, like the ionization system. We had UVC lighting that was, that we were able to purchase and move throughout the different areas of the jail. We increased our sanitation. We increased our questions as far as inmates being booked in. Temperatures were taken, and then I think just the close down of the facility in whole, greatly reducing the number of people that could come into the jail that would carry it. So again, I think our staff did a wonderful job of staying home when they were sick, notifying people when they were sick, getting tested when they were sick. And I think that's what, one of the bigger reasons that we didn't have a more widespread issue of COVID within the jail. Again, with COVID, a lot of the programs and services that we have or usually have had to be postponed for 2020. One of the ones that really increased was our mental health program. So having fewer number of inmates, we still had as many contacts with our mental health team with the inmates as we had in previous years. And again, I think a lot of that is because of COVID. You know, there was greater stressors. We had a lot of people that had mental health episodes while they were in jail or just prior to coming to jail, and that's what caused them to get arrested and come to jail maybe. But it seemed like we had a lot more mental health issues and serious mental health issues in 2020 than we had in years past. And at some point, you know, I would recommend that you read the quote from Jim Ball. He's our licensed clinical social worker, qualified mental health professional. But he wrote a nice quote about 2020 and how challenging it was for him. In dealing with our mental health, we also added the services of Rebecca Moore. She is a psychiatric nurse practitioner. She came in very eager in 2020 to help with our mental health needs. I think she saw about 194 inmates or had contacts with about 194, somewhere in that area during 2020. And she was seeing those that had the most severe cases. So it lightened the load up on Jim Ball a little bit. But she's also able to prescribe medications, psychotropic medications, to try to help with those inmates having the mental health episodes, to try to get them through their incarceration, their period of stay here, and hopefully get them back on the right track. So that was a very positive addition to our mental health staff. And I can't say enough about what they've done. They've also helped with training staff when it comes to mental health. Our medical staff helps with training of staff for medical issues. All of the staff have been through mental health first aid. You know, we're trying to do what we can to improve ourselves so we can combat the issues that come into the jail. And right now, mental health is one of the most serious problems that we have. When we started looking at the other programs, some of our long-running programs like adult education, we just had to put on a pause for 2020. One thing that we were able to kind of work around was our library service. We have a very good partnership with Monroe County Public Library. And we would allow the staff from the public library to come to the jail, and we would send out request forms to all the blocks. So the inmates were able to request certain authors, certain titles. The librarian would fill those requests and actually put the books, the selections in a milk carton, and we would take those milk cartons to the block. That way, the library personnel were not having contact with the inmates, and we were protecting everyone in that situation. But it still gave the inmates something to do and kept them productively occupied. There's a lot more to managing inmates than throwing them in a concrete room with a steel door and shutting the door behind them. If you do something like that, they're going to come up with their own means. They're going to become destructive. So we have to give them something to do. And reading, getting books is a great way to keep them occupied. A lot of the men and women here in the jail will read a book a day. So when we start looking at circulation, the circulation really doesn't do just to how many times those books have been read. Because a book could go into a block, it'll be read by the person that received it, and then they'll pass it on to their cellmate, then they'll pass it on to the person next door. And before long, that book could have been read by 32 people. So and the circulation doesn't really just do justice to the number of books that are read and the number of times that it's passed from hand to hand within the jail. And again, that's one of our long-running, very, very well-run programs that we have at the jail. We were still doing some of our New Leaf New Life programs. And a lot of that dealt more with just basic contact with the inmates. So when they got out of jail, they would have the contact and kind of bridge that gap between the incarceration and then being out in the public. So we tried to continue that through the, through the letter writing, getting those, that correspondence to New Leaf New Life and things like that. And then the other program that we had was our New Beginnings Program. And again, with technology, we were able to do that through Zoom meetings, through teleconferences, video conferences. So we tried to keep that up every day that we. We still didn't get the number of hours that we would have liked each day, but we were at least getting some programming into that therapeutic block to try to make their period of incarceration more productive for them. And then I think the last thing that it goes into is. I think the last thing that we kind of go into on this report is things that were done in the jail. We talked about staffing a little bit. You know, we've been very fortunate to keep our staffing up. We were down a few people in the height of COVID, but we have since been able to fill all of our positions and even get a few part-time officers to help out. So we're not very bad on staffing maintenance. This past year, we installed new toilets and sink valves. And I think that was a great thing for us to do. And I think it has helped reduce the water consumption with the Correctional Center, which is something that you guys hopefully appreciate because it means lower water bills. We got rid of some of the swinging stools that had been in the jail since it was originally built in 1985, 86. They were just worn out. So we have placed Norix, a brand name, stool that's attached directly to the floor. Still gives the inmate a place to sit, but it doesn't give them the capability of swinging that seat so they can run it into the wall and break the locks. We've had a lot of issues this past year with lock door locks, the cell door locks. So we've been trying to work with vendors and our maintenance department to work on those locks to ensure the safety and security of not only the inmates, but the staff and the basic public. Placed epoxy on the showers to prevent leaking. Incandescent lights were replaced with LED lights. Allows for a much brighter cell. Again, less electricity is being used. Main feature in the kitchen was a new grease trap was installed that was compliant with local regulations. And that was a very big project. We had a new water boiler installed to ensure hot water. And I know our maintenance crews come in and work on the hot water quite a bit, and they complain every day that they have to work on it because the specs, the blueprints for the water system is nothing like the water system that was actually installed. So they have a lot of headaches with things like that. We're always doing maintenance, whether it's just basic repairs like the door locks. We're always doing painting, trying to make sure that the areas look clean, fresh, trying to cover up graffiti that unfortunately happens. So we're always trying to do something as far as maintenance is concerned. When we talk about unfunded needs, I mentioned the locks in several of the blocks. We're having a big issue with that. And we have found out that the company that supplied those locks 35 years ago no longer maintains them and no longer makes them. So we're having some pretty serious issues with locks and just trying to find something to take the place of them. Our padded cell had been down for quite a while, and we actually just got it repaired a couple of weeks ago. But that was one of our unfunded and greatly needed replacements. The floor drain in the kitchen has had a leak, and we're trying to get that fixed. But again, that has been a very lengthy, tedious process, and it requires a lot of specialized plumbing skills. And it will take our kitchen down for a little while to make sure that's done. So that's something that we're really not looking forward to, but something that's going to happen. And I think that is the main points of our annual report. I've tried to go through this a lot faster than I have in the past. So if you have any questions, I mean, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Well, thank you, Commander Crowe. And again, thanks for being here and presenting very helpful, useful information to us and to the public and for assisting with our discussion here and any questions that we might have. It looks like Counselor Hawk has her question, her hand up. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hawk.
Yes, Commander Crowe, when you were speaking of the new beginnings, did that include what would normally be the educational process to help them get their GED?
No, a lot of the people that are in that New Beginnings Program already have their, excuse me, already have their GED. With the type of programming that they have, the structured programming that they have in that block, they really don't have time to go to the GED programs. So we try to offer them other things that are really going to help them when they're outside. And like I say, a lot of the men and women that go into those classes already have their GED or equivalent.
Is there any way that we can get back to making sure they're working on their GED? I thought that was one of the major things we wanted to try to do.
Well, again, with that New Beginnings Program, that specifically deals with people that have mental health disorders or substance abuse problems. So we work with those things first and get them, get them to take care of those issues first. We will start the GED program up again as soon as we can open things back up. And with opening things back up, we have scheduled for the 29th for the inmates to get vaccinations. So we hope that after the inmates get their vaccinations, we will be able to start opening up, starting the adult education program, some of the religious programs, some of the things that we had done so successfully in the past, start getting those things back in place for the inmates to have those programs.
Thank you.
But yes, our adult education program generally does better in the jail than it does in the rest of this, in outside, in the community setting. So we're very happy, very pleased with our GED program, and our teachers do a wonderful job in here.
Okay, it's Mr. McKim, and then I believe Mr. Deckard.
Thank you, Commander Crowe. I have just two questions, one of which is about our licensed clinical social worker. Oh, I'm sorry, the licensed therapist, Mr. Ball. Is it, we have talked in the past about possibly having another shift of that service. Do you think that that would be valuable in dealing with the challenges in the jail? Or are there other interventions that you think would be more effective?
And if you remember last year's budget, we got approved for a part-time LCSW to come into the jail. And that was close to starting in January. We're having a hard time finding another person. Anytime you speak of a jail setting, it's hard to find healthcare, mental healthcare that want to come in in that setting. So we're just having a hard time filling that vacancy right now. But we do have that in motion.
Got it. And how many, refresh my memory, how many hours a week was that?
An additional 20 hours.
Twenty.
Jim's here 40 hours. Rebecca's here about four, either through phone consultation or directly with the inmates. And then we're getting about 20 more hours, so we're supposed to have 20 more hours with the part-time LCSW.
Okay, thanks. Let us know if there's anything that we need to do that would give you the resources you need. And I know, you know, we may have to think of, for example, think of the salary if that's not enough to, if you're not able to find any candidates.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Oh, and then my other question was about the, was about data quality. Now, I remember, I don't remember whether it was last year or the year before. I know there were some issues in terms of defining in the system what constituted a booking. And I just wanted to make sure that we had kind of a stable definition in the Spillman system now and understanding of what counts as a booking for the report.
Yes, sir, we do. We got that taken care of after that. And I believe that was 2018 that that happened. But yes, we got that taken care of very promptly after that. Snap food. Thank you.
Mr. Deckard.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Commander Crowe, for being here. It's always good to talk with you. You know, looking at your numbers, and I appreciate what Counselor McKim was saying about Jim Ball, who is a fierce advocate to all of us, anytime that you've had him in meetings with us. And I'm sure he's a fierce advocate among all the folks working in the jail. But look, just looking at the notes that he's typed up and then these numbers, particularly you're talking about suicide observations, you know, going from in 2018, 761, to in 2020, 927 suicide observations, that's a lot. And I can't think of a lot of jobs or workplaces or facilities that deal with that every day. That seems to be a lot for not only your 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 folks, but just the population altogether. In your opinion, just based on what we're what we're seeing, what we know, and you've made a lot of comments in the past about uh being one of the largest mental health uh facilities i- in the community. Do you only see this continuing to continuing to go up as you all do what you do and as Jim Ball says, you work the jobs uh the way that he kind of recommends you work them? What are your thoughts?
I agree with what you're saying. I think that with our lower population in twenty twenty, or we still saw this about the same numbers, if not some increased numbers in some of the mental health. I think when our population gets back up to where it was, you know, prior to March of twenty twenty, that we're going to see an explosion with those numbers, you know, especially if we get up to the two eighties, two nineties, three hundreds like we have seen in the past.
I think I appreciate that, and I always appreciate your candor on this. I think it's stuff that the the public and the council needs to hear. Um, because these are our community members and this is what they're dealing with, and this is what all your your folks are dealing with. So thank you very much. This helps us to know.
I still think that the jail is the largest mental health facility in each community. We just got back from a conference. The sheriff and I went to a conference in Indianapolis with the Sheriff's Association. And Steve Luce, the president of the Sheriff's Association, he he always states that the jails are our largest mental health facility. And he deals with sheriffs in each and every county in the state of Indiana. And he also deals with a lot of sheriffs nationwide, and it's the same problems everywhere you go. You know, dealing with the mental health, um, the serious mental health needs of the inmates. It's not something that's going to go down. I I can only guess that it's going to keep going up and up.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Iverson.
Commander Crowe, thank you for this annual report. I um kind of, unfortunately, it's not in the packet for the public to see uh in at least in this meeting, but um that I really appreciate the level of data you included here. Uh, I really appreciate the charts and the graphs you included in and particularly to the point that you were just making. Um, there's a a chart on, I think it's page fifteen here, where it's it charts depression, the PHQ scores uh versus of COVID nineteen versus overall scores. And it and it just, it highlights what you're going through. Um, it just the um, you know, the the fact that COVID nineteen is exasperating on already tenuous a situation. And so that leads me to my question, which is, do you know when the vaccinations will begin inside the 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 jail there?
We're supposed to start getting them the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So two days, and um I just confirmed that with our medical staff today.
Okay, that's wonderful. That's good news. And do you have access to other supplies to keep the inmates safe? Do uh adequate supplies like uh face coverings, hand sanitizer, things like that?
Well, we 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 give everybody a face mask and we have plenty of face masks to give out. Um, when you start talking about things like hand sanitizer, we have to be very careful because hand sanitizer can be used for ill effects. Um, if it was used for what it was intended for to sanitize your hands, that would be great, but a lot of there's been a lot of cases where inmates have tried to drink it, use it to make other types of alcohol, and it's not intended for that. It's not healthy to ingest. So we just have to be very careful. Now, we have been giving soap to any inmates that ask so they have the ability to wash their hands. And from what I've seen, hand washing is a lot better than hand sanitizer. Um, so we try to provide all those basic needs for the inmates. Uh, again, we're sanitizing at least three times a day, the heavy hand traffic areas. Um, we had the ionization system installed in the ventilation in the jail, not only in the jail, but in the other ventilation system in the justice building. We have the UVC lights that we can transport from cell to cell, from area to area. Um, we have another air handler um as soon as you enter the fourth floor. So we're doing everything that we possibly can to try to protect the staff, the inmates, and ultimately the public um with what we're doing.
Great, wonderful.
All right, uh, Ms. Munson, yes.
Commander Crowe, thank you for your report. I believe that members of our community would like to read this. And how are you going to make this available to the public?
Let me go back to the Indiana Code. It's on the front page. So this has been distributed to uh the auditor's office, and it states in the Indiana Code that it is to be provided to the county auditor and be maintained as a public record. So I think that would be a good place to start. Um, I don't
Okay.
I don't know if the council has the ability to put it someplace where it can get public access. Um, you know, we want to be very transparent in everything that we're doing, all of our numbers. Uh, we don't try to hide anything, and I think that's been evident in the past by the number of tours that we had given prior to COVID nineteen. You know, we want to be very transparent and we want people to see what their jail is and how and how it's operated, the conditions. Um, so we have no problem with sharing anything that we have with the public.
So, thank you. We appreciate your your interest in transparency, and I know the public does. There's the annual report for twenty nineteen uh that is uh on the county website. But I really don't know if that uh that covers the jail. I think it would be great to have the the council work with um with the auditor or with uh your with your office to see how we can get this uh made available to the public.
Just let me know and I'll be more than happy to work with you or anyone else.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Munson, for that suggestion and all. Uh, I'm putting that in my notes here to uh check in with the auditor on the liaison to that office as well as uh the sheriff's office of the jail. Uh, we'll make sure that we get that published ASAP so that it can be accessed by the public um as quickly as possible. Ms. Wilt.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to thank you, uh, Commander Crowe, for taking the time out to do this. I I know you you fulfilled your obligation when you provided the report to us, and I think I was one of the the counselors who um asked pretty please, maybe without the pretty please, for you to come talk to us about it, and it really does help. It helps us think things through. It helps us to have an opportunity to talk with you and um ask some questions. And I think it's important um for the public too. I mean, we don't have a huge audience, but folks do um, you know, look back through recordings and and the like, and um I know you've always been super cooperative and great about uh bringing information to us. So I just wanted to thank you for doing that and for your willingness to uh to put things um maybe on our website as well.
No problem. You know, I was once told by a gentleman that I really admire that sometimes you have to pat your own back because nobody else wants to. So I think doing things like this, we're patting our own backs. You know, we're we're showing the public the that there is more to the jail besides concrete and steel, so.
Well, it, yes, and and I wanted to take the opportunity just to, you know, say thank you. I I think that you and your staff under the leadership of yourself and and Sheriff Swain have just done a very uh admirable job and a very challenging uh year to navigate. As you mentioned, you know, probably the most difficult year that we've ever experienced here uh in recent history in in uh Monroe County, if not all of our history. So um I think the the report uh really reflects a lot of the things that I'm very proud of that uh Monroe County is doing with uh the jail facility and the programs that we're providing there that I know a lot of other counties in the state are not doing. And so I just want to say, you know, thank you for um, you know, all of the work that you put into it and the thought that you put into this um uh for the community. And um, you know, your willingness to continue to innovate. I think that's really important as well, too, and it's very clear in my, you know, short time on council that there's there's a a great willingness to do that. So very much appreciate it. And look forward to keeping in touch on on these things going forward as well, too.
Like, and I want to make sure that my staff is recognized.
Yeah. Absolutely. Um, and I can, you know, I can attest, and I think it's good. This is a reminder that you mentioned the tours uh earlier, and I've I've done the tour over there and have seen the facility. It's a very challenging facility to work in, uh, no doubt about it. Um, the staff is, uh, I know that you and and the sheriff put a tremendous amount of emphasis on training. Uh, and it it's very evident how well-trained uh the staff are there and uh just really appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? For, yes, uh, Ms. Wilt.
Sorry, I have a question again. Um, it seems just from everything, you know, kind of looking across in total, everything you've said, um, the common denominator for making things better, at least it seems to me, would be to reduce the population on something uh from something other than COVID. So in a more permanent way, keep the numbers down. And that, and but something you said earlier was that your job didn't get any easier when you had fewer people. Um, and I I guess my question is, do you agree then that our goal should be very driven by reducing, you know, driven towards reducing numbers? And if so, what else could we be doing as we kind of look forward? I mean, we're waiting on information, so um to make some decisions, but um what else can we be doing to improve the services that you're providing?
You know, that's a, that's a really hard question statement to try to to try to answer. When I started here in nineteen ninety-five, we referred to one side of the building as the misdemeanor side, and the other side of the building was the felony side. And we did that at that time because that was how our classification worked. We had misdemeanor inmates and we had felony inmates. That's no longer the case. And I don't, it's not just because of COVID, it's just the trend that has been happening for the past eight to ten years. We are seeing less and less misdemeanors being housed in jail. So I think our judges are doing a good job of keeping those minor crimes out of jail. But I think we all have to realize that there are people that need to be in jail. You know, there are people that are violent. There are people that have committed serious crimes and they have to be in jail. Yeah, again, I think this county is very proactive. You know, we started doing basically a pre-trial release a long time ago, before it was ever really thought of as pre-trial release in this county. So I I think collectively, we've been doing a good job of keeping people out of jail. But there are just some people that need to be in jail, and I think with our increased population and I think with sixty-nine coming through the county now, that that's going to increase, especially once it's completed from Martinsville to Indianapolis. I think we're going to start seeing more people in jail. And you know, if you look nationwide, there's a correlation between the number of people in the community, the population of a community and the people that are in jail. And you just, it's hard to get away from those type of statistics. So can we reduce population? Yes, but can we reduce it to a number that's going to make it easier for all the jail staff? Well, when we had a hundred and eighty-one people, you know, that was the lowest that we've had in years. And we still had people here every day. We were still doing things. We still had issues. We still had use of force events. We still had all the same things because the people that were still here were the most serious people and the ones that unfortunately create the most problems. So again, that's a hard question to answer, and I'm probably not the most qualified person to answer that. You know, I think that's why we have the studies, so we can get experts that come in and and try to do their magic to to forecast the future and tell us what we need to do.
Well, I appreciate you providing a perspective on it. I I understand no one person has all of the answers to it. Although it it becomes increasingly clear to me that a lot of the solutions to what we see as jail-related problems are really external to the jail and prior to anyone entering that system.
You know, I I love programs, and I think that programs have the potential to help some people. You know, there's there's some of the people that are in jail that have just been given a bad hand. And if we can help, you know, help them with either education or job opportunities or substance abuse or mental health, you know, whatever the issue is through our programming, I think you know, that's one way to reduce our recidivism and keep people out of jail. You know, and I've talked about this before. I think in a in a real typical year, we do a lot of programming. Unfortunately, this year, we haven't been able to do that. And I think that our programs are at a maximum right now. We just don't have the the space, the resources, the time um to do anything other than what we are, what we're doing in a normal year. So are there things that could be done? Yes, I mean, um, but are we able to do that with what we have right here? I don't think so.
Officer Hawk, did you have, did you have a question?
I think Commander Crowe uh alluded to what I was going to say is that we have so many of the inmates that they just can get out, come in, get out, and it's just same, you know, evolve the war. And if we could uh provide more mental health assistance in intervention while they're there, that might reduce the number of times they are back visiting us again. And even with their families, we we see uh when you're looking at the numbers going in, a last name, oh, this is another family member. And and sometimes you have to fix the whole family. And that can help with the mental health intervention there too. So uh I'm I'm thinking if we have trouble hiring somebody at part-time, maybe if you if we bumped it up to that full-time position and and paid the reasonable amount to get somebody in there, that could really be a big, a big help uh to staff and and to the inmates.
Yeah, and and I appreciate that, Counselor Hawk. That might help, you know, instead of offering a part-time job, offer a full-time job. It might attract more people. The problem that we have right now with our mental health with just Jim being here is he spends his time with the suicide watches, with the inmates that have flagged as a potential suicide threat, with the sed grounds. He doesn't have, he doesn't have the time, the resources to do programming, to do any type of therapy. You know, and I, we're basically just putting a Band-Aid on right now, and we're not really treating the underlying problem. So hopefully in the future, that's something that we can look at and maybe expand with. But again, I'm probably not the expert on this and I can just tell you what I've seen and what I've heard from other jails, other counties, other states, you know, things that they're trying to do. It's it's really pretty interesting. You know, there's one jail that created a whole ward for mental health. Just so they can do therapy with with those people that have mental health issues. You know, I wish we had opportunities like that, but right now we don't. So are there things we can do in the future and look at in the future? Most definitely.
Right. Any other questions or uh discussion on this? Before we say good evening to Mr. Crowe, and uh thanks again for for joining us. Uh, this is a a great discussion and uh we'll we'll continue to stay in touch, okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Up next is our sheriff's office, and we have Captain of Operations, uh, Brian Davis with us. Yes, I see him there. And uh so what we'll do here for this item is this is a discussion. on the request of a new position, the Administrative Data Analyst in the Sheriff's Office that we had been discussing. And as you all may recall, back in last year's budget deliberations, we discussed this position. It received a favorable consensus among council members at that point, but we wanted to put it off to the following year, just for budget purposes more than anything. But we just wanted Captain Davis to come in and check in with us on this position. See if anyone has kind of changed their thinking before we would decide potentially to engage the Services of WIS on having this position classified. And Mr. Davis had sent out a job description for us with, that was in the packet. So hopefully you've all been able to review that. But I'll turn it over to him now, just kind of give us a presentation on this position.
Okay. Thank you and good evening, councilors, and thank you for affording me this opportunity to speak with you this evening about the possibility of creating a non-sworn position for the Sheriff's Office, which we have titled and is in the packet as an Administrative Data Analyst. The Sheriff's Office has a vision statement which reads, "It is our vision that Monroe County remain one of the safest and most enjoyable places to live and visit in the state of Indiana, and for the Sheriff's Office to be a leader in public safety. We achieve this through innovation, technology and community partnerships. We strive to achieve our vision through collaborative problem solving with the community. The reason I'm sharing that vision statement this evening is I feel this new position will desist in furthering this vision with the duties that would be assigned to it. Conversations between the sheriff and some members of the council began about the possibility of creating this position sometime last year, possibly in May, with the main objective of increasing transparency with the Sheriff's Office, with our community on matters of public interest such as statistical information and other general data. This position, primary focus would be to specialize in crime trends and patterns, surveys, statistical analysis, data integrity, and reporting statistics to police personnel, the public and other, other government agencies or institutions. The data collected and statistics that have been analyzed would be presented by the individual in this new position to either myself or the sheriff, which serves the agency in a Public Information Officer or PIO role, to be distributed to the public or other organization via public access such as the Sheriff's Office website or other social media platforms that we have currently. Over the past year, our office has seen a substantial increase in Freedom of Information requests from the public that are not requests for copies of accident reports or criminal reports or even photographs, but rather requests for this type of information that would fall under this new proposed position. We've also seen a similar increase in the Clary Act requests. These requests in, in all have put a substantial burden on our current administrative staff to get the information compiled and vetted and re-reported to the requesting parties in the prescribed timeline set by statute. It is our hope that the council move forward with the review and classification process for this description.
All right. Thank you, sir, for that information. And again, yeah, the, the purpose of this discussion, we're not going to be taking a vote here necessarily, but we just kind of want to get a, a general consensus of the council. Do we want to engage Services of WIS on getting this new position classified? This is kind of the practice that we've gotten into with brand-new positions, county government coming to this, to the council first, kind of a work session, discussion, gauging the, the council and then going through the PAC process. So I, I don't know of Mr. Deckard, if you had any additional information to add, but feel free as PAC president.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, it is PAC's intention to get some buy-in from council on even pursuing down the route of getting a WIS write-up, which costs some money and getting that sent back to the county. I will say, or to the council, PAC and then eventually PAC would pass it to the council. I will say, this is a cumbersome process and it does require a, a lot of cooperation from the asking departments and of course PAC. And, and we have a little bit of the easier end to that. And then of course council. All that said, if you were a member of the public and you were wanting to watch how new positions and new directions for departments were made, you would see it in all of these meetings. And so while it's painful for maybe some of us in this process, the public is watching this take place before us in this direction. If I could, I'd like to speak a little bit to this request. I think that we all have observed a, a lot of changes, a lot of requests for data, a lot of requests for information, a lot of need to know. And there is no doubt in anyone's mind that our policing community is the focus of a lot of attention, a lot of questions and a public that wants to know more and officers certainly that want to tell more. And I think that there is merit to going down this route to figure out if this would be something that could be quantified into a position. Having that be able to assist the sheriff and reporting out data and also assisting that department in, in looking at data. We literally just now got done listening to the jail commander talk us through the numbers that we as a council and the public cannot see every day on the inside of our jail. And as a result of that, we know that they had nine hundred some odd suicide watches they did last year. I think that's a number the public should know. I think what Captain Davis is asking for is a position that can help with that. I'm not sure what all the particular outcomes will be or specifics. But again, I think it's good that the public is watching very transparently us talk about this. We got about three thousand department heads watching this as well and other elected officials. And I think that's a healthy thing. And so hopefully as councilors think about this, this is part of that public process if you wish to proceed or not.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Any other questions or comments, discussion? On this request, how are people, are there any concerns about moving this position forward through the PAC process, starting Mr. Iverson and, and then Ms. Wiltz and then Ms. Munson?
Actually have a question, not a concern. Captain Davis, you talked a lot about public information requests and Clary Act requests. How would you categorize or determine what types of questions or data this, this position would even start to investigate? So have you thought about that? Or I guess I'm kind of curious because it seems like you're probably getting questions about a lot of topics.
Yeah, so I, I don't directly work with the, the lady in our front office staff that actually handles the Freedom of Information requests that come in, but when they exceed the normal, hey, can I get a copy of an accident report or things of that nature? Or body camera requests which have skyrocketed. Those things typically do funnel through me and the, the increase in just that involvement. We, we've been served with several just blanket, how many times in the past, three to five years has the Sheriff's Office investigated this type of crime and, and this demographic or geographical location within the county? And currently, we, we don't really, we're limited to what Spillman, which is our, our CAD system. Whatever it can generate is what we are currently limited to. We have no one assigned specifically with those tasks. So, you know, one request for something like that can be pretty cumbersome. But over the past eight to ten months, probably it's, it's been almost three to five of those a week or, or a month rather. So I think the common trend is types of calls, number of arrests, and then kind of subcategories of ethnicity or sex and things of that nature, which are, are common inquiries that we're receiving as well. All of which, if we had someone in that position that could keep that data up to date and we knew it was true and accurate, it could be, it could be a topic of discussion on a social media post, or it could be something that's kept and maintained on a regular basis on the sheriff's website. Where when we get those phone calls or requests, we can immediately say, yeah, we have that. You know, here's where you can access that information immediately. And if you would have additional from there, you know, we, we can sure facilitate that request.
It's really helpful. Yeah, I, I think getting out ahead of it, you know, with social media posts and even like a website database, that, that would be really interesting to see too. So yeah, that's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Okay.
Great. Ms. Wiltz?
Yes, thank you. And first I wanted to clarify, this particular position would not necessarily be working with any of the jail data necessarily, or would they?
I, that, I, I don't know for certain the answer to that, but I would assume that, you know, with the, the jail gets similar requests for inmate population and, you know, levels, how many felony versus misdemeanor, things of that nature. I, I personally, and I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but I would imagine it would be included. I, I see no reason it couldn't be included.
Okay. Um, I noticed on the description, it said that high school degree, GED, kind of minimum, college degree preferred. And then as it goes through the description of, of kind of responsibilities and duties, it's talking about statistical analysis and you know, making some fairly sophisticated conclusions based on data. And I don't know, maybe it's just pro forma that we say high school and college preferred, but it seems to me like you probably need a college degree to do this job.
I would agree. And, and full disclosure, this is the first job description that I have mixed all the ingredients together in a bowl and made from scratch to present. I've been a part of collaborating with first, but this is the first one from scratch for me. So some stuff, particularly the educational requirements was just plugging in what is basically standard for a Sheriff's Office job.
Got it.
Minimum of a high school. Yeah.
And if I, if I may just ask Ms. Rice a question on that as well too, and then sorry to interrupt. Ms. Rice, and that would be something that if it were to go to WIS, they would provide some guidance as well.
Absolutely. Yeah. So that draft that Ryan came up with, we will, if this goes forward to PAC, we'll send that to Wagner and Shealy. And then they'll look broadly at sort of other jurisdictions and they'll amend those as necessary. So the, what has been done right now will be a really helpful start, but it won't be the ending place for sure.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Wiltz. Go ahead.
No problem at all. That's, that's great. Um, the other question that's popping around in my head right now is going to sound a little ornery and I'm not trying to be ornery or to put you on the spot. And in fact, I, I hope that others here would discuss. And that is, I've read and seen in, in some other places that this type of data is recommended to be handled and analyzed and reported by a position outside of the actual law enforcement department or office. And I can go into why and all that, but, but I'm wondering if we could talk a little bit about why that's not necessarily the way we want to go in this case. Do you have thoughts on that?
As far as the, the initial question, I, I honestly don't. I was not in the initial conversations when this position was initially proposed to the sheriff. So from that regard, I would probably have to defer that to him. But to answer in a, a broader scope, I can provide some insight. So if you've reviewed the job description that we had initially put together, in, in our mind, when we were reviewing this and putting it together, we didn't see that the, obviously the main focus of this position is what I spoke on in the beginning of the, the presentation. But we didn't feel that that would be a forty-hour, five-day, you know, five-day-a-week full-time responsibility. So with that, we had other duties that we currently are outsourcing or putting on people that's, that's not necessarily in their job description. Some other duties that would fall in line with that same type of qualification that we could have that person do in the, the downtime of a, a lack of Freedom of Information request or requests from the council or whoever may be putting the request for some type of data. So if the person was a third party not affiliated with the Sheriff's Office, for example, like you had mentioned, the ability to put those other obligations and duties on them, we wouldn't be able to do.
That's, that's true. That makes sense. Um, so this position then, and I'm just kind of, I'm scanning to see if I can remember the other types of things. I remember at one point it was discussed that this person processed evidence. Is that still in the description? I'm sorry for not remembering.
I, I think it references the, the, the ability to. So the, the way we have set this position up and in our, our blueprint, if you will, is they will fall under the direct supervision of our detective lieutenant, who is the highest ranking detective within our investigative division. They, we, we basically hybrided some duties of a position that we rely heavily on with the Wilmington Police Department currently, which is a Crime and Data Analyst for crime patterns and trends. So currently, the Sheriff's Office is taking a absolute tremendous amount of catalytic converter thefts. So having the ability to map that out and take that data and provide it to our investigators, it, it's a proactive approach for a crime trend that's in the area. So that would be an example of an additional duty. But the evidence technician also falls under that supervision. So in the, I can't really imagine a situation that this position, especially being a non-sworn position, would ever be placed into the field, but hopefully that helps.
No, it, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kim? Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Munson was ahead of you.
That's okay. My, my question was very similar to Counselor Wiltz's and so I want to follow up with Captain Davis's answer about these other duties. I didn't see those in the job requirements and difficulty of work, but I do see checkmarks and indications in other parts of the packet information that you provided that points to other duties. I really think, I think when we understand these better, then we, then we will be able to see if this is, is really a, a full-time position. Also, whether or not the, the jail data analysis is part of the duties, I think is, is another, another and thank you for bringing up the qualifications, Counselor Wiltz. I was going to point to the same thing because I spent part of my day-to-day dealing with statistical analysis of data. And I certainly couldn't have done it without going to college. So that's, that's basically it. I, I think this has a lot of, of of good intent for it and I think it's just a matter Of good intent for it. And I think it's just a matter of, uh, the technicalities of the job description. I do believe that it is needed after asking the sheriff's department, uh, last year for, uh, information about. Various, uh, uh, reports. What sort of, uh, what sort of incidence of this? Type of, uh, event or that type of response was typically carried out. And I think once the, once the public has information available. That can come from, uh, the work of data analysis. I think the sheriff's department will be much better appreciated by, uh, by county residents.
If, if I may to, to address the, the first part that you raised, um, concerning the duties of this proposed, um, job. So I believe in the, the attachment or the packet, if you will, there was. I think three or four separate, uh, attachments that was presented, uh, for council's review. Um, the one you referenced with the checkboxes, I believe, was the employee job questionnaire that, um, I had filled out that kind of rated. Uh, individual duties and the frequency of those duties, but also an attachment which I formatted. Uh, as close as I could, uh, put it together to what a final. Job description would be for the county that outlines, um, about two and a half, I believe. Two and a half to three pages of actual job duties to be for, performed by that position.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. McKem, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I actually sort of wanted to respond a little bit to, uh, Counselor Wiltz's. Uh, concerns about, uh, the position, whether it should be inside the sheriff's office or outside the sheriff's office. And I certainly understand her concern. I, I think there is certainly, um, desire, not, not in particular in this community, but overall with, uh. Uh, with more, um, community oversight of, of policing activities and, and also with. Uh, the kind of oversight, oversight and also independence of, of data. And so I certainly understand that, but I think the way that this job is, is constructed, the way the description is written. That it clearly, I mean, if you look at the, the very first two duties, the first one is. Uh, a, a series of duties that will aid in the investigative process and provide timely information, which increases the apprehension of offenders and the clearance of cases. Then the second is, is the position's part of the investigative, uh, division specializing in crime trends and patterns, et cetera. I think it's pretty clear that the, the, the primary purpose of this position is to serve the overall, uh, mission of the sheriff's office. In, in its, in its law enforcement and, um, crime reduction, uh. Mission and, and public safety mission. And, uh, as such, I think it's appropriate that this, this particular position be inside the sheriff's office. I, I, like I said, I understand Counselor Wiltz's concerns and there probably is. Room for, um, independent data, uh, independent data analysts, but that, this is not that position. And so I, I still remain supportive of, um, this effort moving forward with the. The job description is approximately as written. I also echo, uh, Counselor Wilson, Counselor Munson's concerns with the qualification though. And hopefully that can be revised when the, the position description gets further detailed analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, so I guess what we want to kind of get a sense of right now is everyone okay with this, uh, moving forward in the process. Uh, through the PAC process. Is there any? Concerns or objections to that? Okay. It doesn't appear that there is. Um, so, Mr. Davis, what we will do. Uh, at this point is get you back on a PAC. Meeting agenda and, uh, it'll be a very quick meeting, I'm sure, because we've had a lot of discussion here today. But, uh, that'll be the next step in the process is get back in front of PAC so that PAC can then vote. Uh, to approve, uh, the, uh, submission of, of the job description to WIS. Does that all make sense? Any questions that you have?
Uh, no, Counselor, none at this time.
Okay. Mr. Deckard?
And I believe unless I'm wrong and Kim Shell will tell me, uh, next PAC will be Tuesday, May fourth noon, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
It is already tentatively on my calendar from last week's PAC meeting.
Excellent. You've been attending a lot of PAC meetings. I feel bad for you.
I love Zoom.
All right. Well, I think that will, uh, conclude everything that we needed to do on this item, but thanks again for, uh, joining us tonight. Uh, presenting the information for us and we'll see you, uh, in May. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Okay. And next, uh, we're going to go back to, uh, the board commissioners. For the original item six, which was a request, uh. For approval of a hire at midpoint.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Counsel, I move to approve the board of commissioners' request for a midpoint hire of the Veterans Affairs Director Position. Fund one zero 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 dash zero zero one two, General Fund Veterans Account Line one two zero zero four.
Second.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Hi, good evening again. Um, the commissioners are respectfully requesting, um, that you consider the, um, allowing us to. Pay this, um, new person in at the midpoint hire. This person comes with, um. Twenty-two years of military service, including, um, support roles. In war operations and providing human resource services and benefit services to military personnel. Um, based upon this experience and his direct knowledge of military benefits. Um, the commissioners are respectfully requesting that this position be hired in at the midpoint level. Um, should counsel agree to this, uh, I wanted to let you know that there is no additional funding, uh, requested as the. Line is already budgeted at the, the three-year level.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Purdy. Let's check with counsel and see if there's any questions for you or discussion. Anybody have any questions on this request? Uh, Ms. Hawk and then Mr. Deckard?
Yes, are we allowed to, uh? Are you ready to share who your, uh, selection is?
Oh, um, yeah, I'm sure because the position's been offered and they've signed paperwork and we've done all kinds of things. They haven't started yet. Um. His name is Steve Miller and he's currently, um, an employee of the city of Bloomington.
I think I know Steve.
Do you?
I'm not sure, but I think maybe I do.
Mr. Deckard?
Thank you. I'm just curious about start day. I know there might be some veterans that, uh, take interest in this. When do you think they might start?
Oh, I'm sorry. So sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, I believe their, their expected first day is May tenth.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Do we have any, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, uh, just to say that I understand there was a great deal of interest in this position and a lot of great applicants. And, uh, I think we are blessed to have, uh, so many people, uh, that wanted to serve in the spot. So. Um, I know, I think it probably was a, a tough thing to try to figure out which one.
Yeah, no, there were a number of very well, um, referenced candidates and it was a very difficult job, I think, for the commissioners to, uh. To finally whittle it down.
Well, congratulations on identifying what appears to be a terrific, uh, candidate for the role and congratulations to Mr. Miller. Um, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to hire at the midpoint in Fund one thousand dash zero zero one two. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. And next up is item nine, which is our first quarter council and board of commissioners discussion. And so. We have some special guests joining us this evening, our board of commissioners.
I, I need to interrupt you. We, we need to do the salary ordinance amendment for this midpoint hire.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and, and, uh, make the motion. Um, counsel, I move to approve the board of commissioners' request to amend the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance. In Fund one zero 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 dash zero zero one two, General Fund Veterans and amend the account line one two zero zero four. Veterans Affairs Director, forty hours, PAT five, non exempt to a midpoint.
Five, PAT three.
Three.
PAT three.
Sorry, that, that's my mistake. It's a PAT three.
I'm on autopilot. Sorry. PAT three, non exempt to a midpoint higher status.
Second.
All right. Any additional information for us, Ms. Purdy, on this?
No, not other than the fact that the, the line is already, um, budgeted at the correct level for this, um, move to a midpoint hire. So. Rather seamless.
All right. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Any public comment? All right. We'll do a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve amending the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance in Fund one thousand dash zero zero one two. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, I got, got a little ahead of myself there earlier, but, uh, we do have our, uh, board commissioners here joining us for this next item. Um, what we have done, uh, and the plan kind of going forward. Is to have, uh, once, uh, every quarter, have our commissioners join us just to kind of discuss some. Items of mutual interest, uh, between the council and commissioners that we'll be working on. So this is the first of those discussions and want to thank them for joining us here tonight. The original, um. Intent for the discussion tonight was to discuss, uh, the potential two thousand twenty-one GO bond and, and, uh, possible, uh, projects and. Um, once we had made those arrangements, we also got some, uh, big news, uh, afterwards, uh, related to the American Rescue Plan, which I know everybody is. Uh, talking about and, and very much interested in. And so we thought since we're going to have our commissioners here with us talking about a potential bond. We might as well also, uh, include a discussion on this, uh, massive, uh, American Rescue Plan that's, uh, going to be. Having a big impact on Monroe County as well too. So, uh, we'll have a, a little bit of a. Presentation, uh, on both items, uh, some discussion. Uh, we'll try to get through it, uh, relatively quickly though. I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but this is really kind of our first. Uh, conversation with the commissioners where the entire council and the commissioners have been together, uh, to have some of these discussions. So. Um, hopefully it will be, uh, worthwhile and, uh, a valuable conversation for us and help us plan, uh, for future. Uh, decisions that we're going to be making. So welcome, uh, commissioners. Thanks for joining us and Ms. Purdy, and I, I believe our auditor is. Uh, here as well this evening. We'll get started here with, uh, the bond discussion, the two thousand twenty-one proposed. Bond projects and just wanted to put this, I know the American Rescue Plan is really kind of, uh. Added a, a little bit of a layer of uncertainty to things with, uh, potential plans and, and we're aware of that as we are awaiting guidance. And directives from the federal government and could potentially impact, uh, you know, bonding decisions and so forth. But just kind of wanted to have a discussion with you all. And see, uh, where things currently stand.
Do you want me to just start off?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, um. Yes. Okay. So I saw that, um. Michelle had requested a copy of the bond projects. Um, I'll send that, definitely send it to her tomorrow. Uh, so I'm going to, I want to wait a little bit to talk about the airport and there, it's a ban that they have. Um, and it's a taxable, um, bond. So I want to wait on that because. I'm kind of hoping that I can get Mr. Cockrel up to, to join in, but his daughter is pitching her first game at South, I think it is. So. Um, you know, and I told him, I said, you know, that's when she's going to get on the, you know, she's going to be on the mound. So anyway. So I want to go straight down to the building needs and, um. We've kind of titled this, the phase two for the health building, the, and this would take care of the, the entrance, the entryway, if you will. It would also put it. Um, put in a door that would separate, um, county government from activate because sometimes they like to, you know, they have later hours or there's. Um, there's a need to. As, as we found through COVID, to separate, um, the access, accessibility of some of the other departments. It would take care of those. It would also, um, be looking at the renovation of the, the loading dock. It's in the back and there's, you know, some question as to, you know, the proper use of that duck, but. I just wanted to let you guys know that's part of that whole, whole phase two project. And if you haven't had a chance to see the, the new health department, you should go in and see it because it's. You, if you didn't see it before, you, you won't, you'll be, I don't think you'll be, I mean, you'll be surprised, but if, if you saw it before, you'd be like, oh my gosh, it's fabulous. Um. And let's see here. So I also wanted to let you know that I have more on building needs as we go along. As you know, we just hired our, um, building and fleet manager and. He needs some time to actually assess all of, of, all of our buildings. So then, um, so there could be more on the building needs and, and it could change priorities to, um, IT needs. Um, virtual cluster, that's where all of our data is backed up by our IT department. And, and we need an upgrade on that. And so I've got this information from Mr. Evans. And so, uh, he estimates that at seventy thousand dollars. Parks, um, they needed, they needed updated external websites that they use for their, um. Uh, shelter reservations and it, you know, he has said that it would. It would be more, more professional and it would be better, um, managed. If we could actually integrate that into our county website, um. He, he estimated the high end of that would be thirty-eight thousand dollars. And then, um, he also gave me body cameras for deputies and jailers at five hundred thousand. And this is. Cams on everybody, um, and allows for all shifts to, to have them. I believe that, well, I know that. Jail Commander Crowe has said, you know, that they, they like having the body cams in the jail and, um, it's been beneficial to them. The other thing that they need, and I got this information from, um. David Gardner, and that is the cell locks need to be. Um. Re- replaced, uh, the ones that we have, they, um, have issues. That I don't really want to talk about here. Um, and so the, the estimated cost to replace all of those, um, cell locks is three hundred thousand dollars. The fleet vehicles listed here, this was just a guess, um, an estimate from, from our fleet and building manager. Um, because he said that if we were looking at all of our, um. Non-law enforcement vehicles, we'd be looking and, and for vehicles that are older than four, five years, four, four years, four years. Uh, maybe about two point nine million dollars to, to replace them all. And he doesn't know, um, you know, do we really need all of those? You don't know, do we really need to replace the truck with a truck or does, you know, what is the need? Um, he also said that, um. Vehicle prices are, are, are unstable at the moment. Um, it's, and unstable and more of an upward climb. Uh, he's been advised that he should expect up to three thousand dollars more per vehicle than, than what's been going on. The other problem is, is we have limited vehicles available. So there's a short supply and high demand. Um, we put a couple of other things in here, um, kind of coming from, and I've tied them to the resiliency report. The solar infrastructure would definitely, I think, fall into that. And, um, the youth services bureau farm property. And the Youth Services Bureau farm property, I think, could also fit into the resiliency report, but not entirely sure. And I don't have any numbers on either of those at this point in time. The information provided by Highway is, so, okay, so the Bachelor Sidewalk Connector. That, I spoke with Lisa Ridge, and she estimates that they could do that for $500,000. And I, I would love to read you the email that explained about it. However, I'm having issues. So this one doesn't put sidewalks?
I can step in if you want on that. So, yeah, so we got a call from a constituent about Rogers and how there isn't, from Country Club all the way to Bachelor, that there isn't a sidewalk. And there are some options that would take a path over to the trail, which is then, as you're going south, is actually moving toward Bachelor. But with the library going in there and, you know, this idea of trying to, you know, get, get students to be a bit more active and walking to school. It was something that I said I would talk to Highway about and get a, and get an estimate on it. So there are some options that wouldn't involve putting a sidewalk all the way down Rogers. This is, this is an option that would take sort of a middle path around walls or so and, and take, take somebody who's walking or biking a little bit east before coming south. But again, with the library going in there, it, it may be a good idea.
Yeah, and the 1.5 is if, is if they put sidewalk all the way down. So that's why that's off to the side. And then the other items are, please don't ask me what a vac truck is. Do you know what a mini excavator is? Not sure about a grater and the low boy. I would, I would suggest if you have questions about what those little things are actually, that you might reach out to Toby or Lisa, the Highway Department. Asked about trail connections, and so Lisa had indicated to me that the next, kind of the next phase of the Liberty Drive to Cars connector, connector is a letting, I believe, and a design. And so if we did $270,000, then that would take us up to the next level, which would be, which we'd probably come back in 2022 for the construction. So I just kind of wanted to give you that information. Parks has a couple of projects they have kind of identified. Most of those are in excess of about $350,000. The Parks Board is going to be meeting it in May. They're going to prioritize those projects at that time. So we'll be able to give you a better idea on that particular request. And then I'm hoping, he's on. So Mr. Cockrell should be here to talk about the airport ban. And I think also she'd talk about the benefits of the bond and, and versus the ARP funding. Okay, Jeff, you're on.
Something fell.
My favorite joke. Let's see here. Did he fall? Yeah, I wonder if he fell off. He is calling in. Yeah, he says, and. Did you find it? Did you find him?
There's one phone number that's online, so I've given them permission to talk, but they'll need to hit star six to unmute.
Okay.
I get to ask that question now or I'm done for because I dropped something. It survived. Do you see my painting?
Hey, I think I got to work. Did you hear me?
Fell off of the wall.
I thought you were talking about that Mr. Cockrell had fallen.
Oh, no. I hit star six, but I was on the wrong screen. So, so I guess I was supposed to talk about the airport ban. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
All right, well, the airport ban, if everybody recalls, we bought that 55 acres about five years ago. And we had a five-year bond anticipation note. When that bond anticipation note was issued, the council, the commissioners approved everything necessary to issue a bond. And that's required in order to get a bond anticipation note. That bond anticipation note and the bond afterwards was anticipated to be taxable because right now that, that ground is leased out for farms. And if we ever have any commercial use of it, then we would expect to get income off of it. So it is a taxable issuance, so it doesn't really sit well with a general obligation bond. Now, we can explore options with bond council, but I, I don't know if they, if they, we can come up with a situation where it would be. So including it with the GO bond at this point would be premature. That's not to say when you look at the tax rates associated with debt issuance and debt service, that they couldn't be calculated in there. I know for the last few years, we've tried to keep that debt service rate the same. And we've done that for a few reasons. I think the biggest is we didn't want to kind of monkey with the tax rates of the one year. It goes down a bunch and then the next year it goes up a bunch. And everybody seems to be much more comfortable if it stays at kind of an even level. So people have an expectation what their tax bills are going to be. Also, we, we always know that every year we've got projects that are necessary. So we, we would really anticipate that to be a kind of an up and down. I know that there's some thought of using the rescue fund. And I guess at this point, I would be able to answer that question a whole lot better from a non-tax rate perspective, if we knew what the rules were for the, for that, for that funding. At this point, if you read the federal legislation, we know it can be used for sewer projects, broadband projects, and water projects. But really uncertain whether any of the other capital projects would be able to be utilized under the current language. And so it's really tough to equate the types of projects we've talked about with that funding, given the lack of guidance and the language in the federal statute.
Okay.
I hope everybody can still hear me.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. I believe Councilmember Hawke had a question, and then it looks like Mr. McKim as well, too.
I'm sorry, my question was about something else not having to do with this. And so perhaps I should wait until you, we've discussed this.
Okay. Mr. McKim?
Make sure I understand what you're saying, Mr. Cockrell. So assuming that we decide we want to continue our practice of maintaining a relatively constant tax rate used for investment in county infrastructure. You're saying that whatever the rate for the airport bond would be, then we might want to consider subtracting that from the rate that we would use for the GO bond in order to essentially, which would of course reduce the amount we could spend on projects. But it would also maintain a relatively constant tax rate for, for our infrastructure. Is that, is that sort of what you're suggesting?
Yeah, if you were going to go ahead and, and keep the bond anticipation note and let it grow into a bond, and you wanted to keep the tax rate equivalent, that is, that is what I'm saying. I would add that I know that our airport director has reached out to see if there's any state funding available to help with the, the cost of that land acquisition. And that I also, I'm curious, because we all, and he's looking into this as well, that American Rescue Fund also includes quite a bit of support for airports. So there may be another pot of money that I know Carlos is looking at that we could look at for that expense.
Thank you.
Our, our question for the council is, is there anything we're missing here that you would want us to consider adding? Obviously, we're going to have to subtract and limit. This is a much higher, but this is how we start usually, is a much higher than what we end up with. So we're just curious to see if there's anything the council wanted to add to this for consideration.
Well, let's check and see. Is there any feelings one way or the other at this point? I know it's so kind of early. And this, this will likely evolve as we go through this process. Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, I had a question about line nine, body cams for deputies and jailers. Do we have a situation where we need to replace body cameras? Or do we need to supply body cameras to a certain number of officers?
We need to replace body cameras. And I wish I'd asked Eric to be on here, but the ones that we have are no longer manufactured by that manufacturer. And so this is just basically getting us back in. Now, what I don't know for sure is, he indicated that this was maybe $500,000 for over five years. So I don't know if, you know, it would be 100 for one year. I don't know how you would, you know, something to consider that part of it. But yeah, no, this is to give them, to refit the body cams and for all of them.
Ms. Wiltz?
How old are the current body cameras? I thought they were relatively new. Is that, am I just dreaming?
We, I think they were purchased. I honestly, they were purchased during my tenure here, so maybe in 1718. I think it's when we purchased those. I don't know if anybody else remembers, and maybe I'm wrong in the number and who this is all going for, because they're not exactly cheap.
Yeah, no, I thought since I started, which would have been 2018.
Okay.
No.
There's been some discussion about changing manufacturers. I know that came up. And because of the software support and the cloud storage issue, I will say that it's, yeah, it's a really good thing that we, we're excited because these are on jailers, not just on deputies, which is really a great thing for transparency, for the community, for the jailers, and for the inmates. So it's really a great program. And so, but Eric can give us some more detail on how much of this is replacement, new manufacturer shifting. Yeah.
I think possibly what Counselor Wiltz is remembering is that probably since she came on the council is when we got body cams for the jailers. We put them on the deputy quite a bit earlier, but it's just more recently that they've been on the jailers.
Got it.
I, I bet you're right, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Deckard, and then Mr. Iverson?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate this list, and I appreciate you going through this. I also appreciate the fact that, Ms. Purdy, you have to sometimes speak on all these things that cross many departments that, that I'm not sure who can ever speak fully to what these things do. From trails to low boys, I think I saw a po boy on there. But my, my comment that I just wanted to offer, and I appreciate this, this that you have on the sheet where it says, more to come from building fleet manager needs time to assess. And I love the fact that that position is being utilized to look at all these things. These, this demand that we have on buildings that are aging, and we should all be conscious of that fact, particularly the public. You know, it's important to save a courthouse and not demolish it. It is going to get older as you go, and that's, that, that's just one. They're all getting older. But also the fact that we are facing more public than we have ever faced, and that's not going to shrink. Our population's about 151,000 and on the move. I say this in a lot of council meetings, but I'll repeat it. When I was born here, it was about 80, 90,000. And that means our public interaction will change. So I appreciate that line and that, and that leadership, and just thoughts that can come back as we navigate where departments are, what happens, how we manage space needs. I mean, the Health Department's a great example. They're using our former post office that's had a couple makeovers. You know, it's, there's just a lot there, and I, I appreciate that and continued work. One of the things I think that that position can do in conjunction with you, Ms. Purdy, is tell us all what space needs really are, because we're not there every day like you all are. And we kind of fly in to assist with these things. So thank you very much for having that on there and all these items.
No problem. Thank you.
Ms. Iverson?
Yeah, I, I want to also just draw attention to line 17 and 18. I think it's really important, of course, that we follow the Environmental Resilience Institute's recommendations. I don't know if the public just saw, but as of like this meeting, the former director was approved to be in the Biden administration. So, yeah, Monroe County. But I think it's, it's great that's in there, and I'm excited to see solar infrastructure being quantified. That, I think that's going to be a good next step to show that Monroe County is a leader in the state of Indiana in terms of our response to climate change. So thanks for putting this in there.
I know Ms. Hawke had a, had a point that she wanted to mention as well, too.
Off, may I ask me?
Yes.
What I was going to ask you earlier, before my kitchen fell apart. Well, I must slap through. Where is the YSB farm property?
Oh, that's actually right. That's just terminology that's being used. So it's at the Youth Services Bureau. There's actually, you know, that field right there. And, yeah.
Now, the other, we got out and bought a farm and I missed it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just at the field.
Yeah, I mean, I can think of worse things we could do with money.
The residents, the residents of YSB love their little garden. They, they use it. They cook with the product out of it. And the thinking is we can really expand that into something bigger. And it provides a good source of exercise, education, nutrition. It kind of checks every box you can imagine. And they actually have in the, in the new YSB facility, they actually have a kitchen specifically for the residents to utilize. So I think it's just a perfect fit, and we, we haven't developed a cost. We have to look at a lot of things on it, but that's just, we're just laying down a marker.
If it had said garden property, I would have absolutely known. But the farm to me means, you know, you've got a barn and you've got some cows and whatever. Okay, that was one question. The other thing is, it might not shock you folks whatsoever to find out that I've been spending a great deal of time speaking with all the people who were so unhappy when they got their tax bill. And so hopefully they are listening now, because I'm thinking they need to stay involved. They need to stay active in what it is that we are doing and not wait until it hits them. And then they are concerned. But I'm just, I mean, there are a lot of things on here that would be just lovely, but it is real money, and it's the taxpayers' money, and they are already hit hard. They were hit hard with this year's tax bill. And the assessed values are going to go up. We're going to get those Form 11s. Have you got your Form 11 yet? It should be, it's got to be mailed out by May 1. I haven't seen it yet, so I don't think it's been moved. But we all expect that assessed value to go up on our existing property. And that tax rate just isn't coming. And that tax rate just isn't coming down as one would think it should. So I don't see how I could support all of these. I'd go through and I'd say, okay, let's say, thanks for the highway. We just raised the tax or the fee for stormwater. What can we take and figure with this? I just think we need to start remembering, this is not Piper Ten money. It's not our money. It's the people's money. And as far as, oh, well, let's keep that tax rate always the same. That's just not a good enough reason to do this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hawk. Commissioner Jones, did you have a, a question or a comment earlier?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to go back to the Youth Services Bureau. In my profession, I have been asked at times to provide plants to prisons. And a lot of the reason for this is because that they, they have really discovered that this really facilitates nurturing behavior in people. They, they actually kind of get to make something happen and see it through the process and take care of it. And it's a true, a true nurturing process. A lot of what we're seeing in our jails. We're actually seeing families, I think Counselor Hawk referred to this earlier. We see that whole families are kind of showing up in our jail or at least descendants and all. And, you know, that's, that's quite a problem. A lot of the people who might eventually end up there do, for one reason or another, end up in the Youth Services Bureau where they do amazing things to help them out. But this would just be another one of those that if we could really foster more of that nurturing behavior in our youth, they might not appear in our jail quite so often.
Go ahead.
May I speak? The good part about that, Commissioner Jones, is that when you look at the cash balance in that income tax that just, is just for the youth services, it's, it's bringing in a lot more money than it used to. And I believe that if there is some kind of need, we should identify the dollar amount and, and they have the money there that would cover just the any kind of a garden project, certainly, I would think. A council member, McKim, did you look at that balance the other day? Were we looking at that together with, with Kim Shell?
Looking at something else, but no, I, I didn't look at the balance on, on that, but I'm sure it's substantial.
It's substantial. So I don't think we should, think we need to go borrow when we're setting there on substantial dollars. I think it sounds like a great project and I would love to be supportive of it.
All right. Uh, any other questions or, or comments on regarding this portion of the discussion? You know, yeah, Ms. Wiltz?
I'm just curious, what's next in this conversation process globally, like?
Well, I think it's, you know, kind of in response to Councilmember Hawk's, I think, very legitimate statement there is that, you know, this is a, this is not set in stone. This is just a preliminary discussion. There's a lot of variables involved. I think that we need to be keeping our eye on, and there's a lot of potential funding that's going to be, I think, very likely that, that will be out there outside of ARP too. There's a lot of proposals floating around out there that's going to inject huge amounts of money potentially into communities that will address, you know, certain things. And we just need to, you know, really be diligent and making sure that we're maximizing all of those opportunities as much as we possibly can and getting the best value for Monroe County residents. So this is a, I think, a very fluid plan. I don't think, you know, anyone is, is expecting that we have everything all set and squared away here tonight. But we want to start having the conversation and it's going to evolve, I think, going forward as, as new information is known. And, you know, there, there's, there's just likely to be a difference of philosophies as well, too, that, that, that we have on these things and we'll arrive at, you know, whatever decision the majority wants to, to go with. Any other questions? But I appreciate, again, the commissioners joining us tonight with this information about a potential bond. It's very helpful for us to begin planning and thinking about it as we have budgets coming up on the horizon here. So thanks again very much. And, yeah, we'll be continuing this conversation and continuing to, to refine the plan going forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll get into the second part of our discussion with the commissioners now, and I'm gonna share my screen. And so I'm gonna do a, just kind of an overview of the American Rescue Plan. And Mr. McKim is also, what happened to you? And then Mr. McKim is also gonna have some information to share during this presentation as well, too. Then we'll just have some questions to kind of discuss at the end, so. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, we wanted to have this discussion just to start preparing for getting our strategy in place for how we're going to deploy all of these resources with the American Rescue Plan.
Excuse me, I think we see your notes rather than the slide.
I'm sorry.
Perfect.
There, no, that was, I'm gonna move that over there. I've got multiple screens here. Okay, so you can see. You can see that, okay. So. We'll move on here to the next slide. Okay, so just kind of an overview here of the American Rescue Plan. So what is it? According to the White House, the American Rescue Plan is an emergency legislative package that's intended to fund vaccinations, provide immediate, direct relief to families bearing the brunt of the COVID-19 crisis and to support struggling communities. This federal legislation encompasses a total of 1.9 trillion dollars delivered through section six oh three of the Social Security Act as added by section nine nine zero one of the two thousand twenty one American Rescue Plan Act, or otherwise known as the ARP. And so this is an unprecedented and massive amount of money that the federal government is putting out there through this legislation. And just to note here on the next bullet, that the 1.9 trillion dollars of ARP funding is in addition to the $2 trillion American Jobs Plan that was proposed just last month. So these two are separate plans and depending on what happens with the American Jobs Plan proposal, we may see a further injection of dollars from the federal government to address issues beyond what ARP will. And so some more details will be coming on both of those initiatives and they can be found by clicking those links or referencing them later at the whitehouse.gov website. So just a few more details here on the American Rescue Plan. Funding from ARP will be made available through approximately eighty-four programs managed by nineteen federal agencies and distributed via seven different methods. In terms of timeline, the money must be used for expenses incurred by December thirty first of two thousand twenty four. So essentially, we've been provided more than three and a half years to strategically spend this funding, which according to President Biden's January twentieth announcement should change the course of the pandemic and build a bridge towards economic recovery. Also, I think it's important to note that the Association of Indiana Counties, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, and the National Association of Regional Councils are working hand in hand to help local units of government meaningfully plan for and deploy the 1.28 billion dollars of relief granted for local units of government here in Indiana. Now, these are all organizations that we're familiar with. And as we know, they've done great work over the years in advocating for local government in Indiana and providing us guidance on new legislation and policies that are going to impact us here at the local level. And so, you know, while we're waiting on some of the more detailed regulations, I think that Mr. Cockrell was referencing earlier to be written that will provide specific direction for local officials. The Association of Indiana Counties and their partners recently tapped government advisor Bruce Katz to offer Indiana counties and municipalities some broad and, and high level guidance, which I think will be helpful to mention here briefly. So Mr. Katz is a really renowned advisor to government and has some very impressive experiences. And his experience in these areas, I think, will be of great value as we examine how to strategically deploy the ARP resources in Monroe County. Of note, Mr. Katz is currently the Director of the NOAAAC Metro Finance Lab at Drexel University. He was Vice President of the Brookings Institution and founding Director of the Brookings Metropolitan Policy Program. And he co-led the Housing and Urban Transition Team for the Obama Administration. And some of you may have seen the, the recent AIC sponsored presentation that featured Mr. Katz. And I'll share some of that information here in a moment. But some key takeaways from this presentation, I think, were very clear. Being willing to access outside resources available to local government, that thinking strategically and working collaboratively are gonna be necessary for us to maximize funding opportunities for residents and communities. And so on this slide here, just, it just provides some more detail on the funding contained within the American Rescue Plan. There's a graphic here that shows the full composition of funding and the different buckets where the billions of dollars will be targeted. That section there in red towards the bottom of the, of the bar graph represents the source of Monroe County's portion of the funding. And altogether, nearly 360 billion dollars will be allocated to local and state government through the American Rescue Plan. And in his presentation, Mr. Katz also highlighted some of the total ARP funding, which is reflected in the list here on the right-hand portion of the slide. I won't recite all of these details, but you can see, again, these are huge dollar amounts, a massive amount of funding with tremendous potential for local communities. Let's move on to the next slide. Okay, so the previous information was kind of a big picture view of the American Rescue Plan. So let's take a look now at what this means for Monroe County government and how it impacts us here locally and some of the things that we'll need to do to get this off the ground. So this is the part that we all get really excited about. Monroe County is estimated to receive 28.79 million dollars via the American Rescue Plan. And you know, that's, again, a tremendous amount of money coming our way. But just to put things into perspective here, that roughly 30 million dollars to Monroe County represents about point zero zero one five eight percent of the total 1.9 trillion dollars contained within the American Rescue Plan. So when you look at it that way, I suppose you could just say it's a drop in the bucket, right? But the first payment will be a 50% of the total. It's expected to be directly deposited into county coffers by May eleventh of this year. So very soon we'll have the first installment of nearly 15 million dollars. Second payment is expected to be deposited one year after the first payment is received. So sometime around or before May eleventh, then we can expect the second installment. Now, the county commissioners also need to adopt an ordinance establishing a local ARP fund to receive the allocation. All disbursements must be made directly from the ARP fund. The ordinance should specifically list the uses described in section six oh three with reference to a plan that will provide details for the use of the funds. Important to note that both the ordinance and the plan can be updated over time. So funds must be appropriated by the county council before use in accordance with section six oh three. The AIC, Association of Indiana Counties recommends that the commissioners and the council develop a spending plan together. So they're saying we, this would be a very collaborative effort. And the auditor's office will perform its regular administrative and internal control functions. All disbursements will go through the normal claims process as outlined by Indiana Code. To my knowledge, we do have everything currently in place to receive the direct deposit of funds, which, again, should be arriving soon. All right, so as with most things, there are some strings attached to the money before we can spend it. So let's take a look now at how the dollars can be spent by Monroe County government. There's four general allowable uses for the funds that Monroe County will receive. Those allowable uses are as follows. You can read there on the screen. The, the first allowable use is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID-19. And here in just a moment, as I mentioned, I'd like for Mr. McKim to present a review of revenue data that will give us a sense of what we're looking at in terms of lost revenue due to the pandemic as well as a potential, any potential future losses, too. Okay, and so the second allowable use is to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. The third use is for making necessary investments of water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And finally, there's a provision that will allow additional pay for essential workers. Mr. McKim, if you have your Excel sheet ready to go, feel free to share your screen and we'll dive into your information here.
Thank you. I am not, I, I don't plan to spend a huge amount of time on this. Just to kind of provide the, the briefest overview. We have already received today from Ms. Gregory, she mentioned this earlier, some additional data that I think will help us understand to a greater degree the amount of revenue loss we've already seen. But I've, I've kind of gone through the materials, she's already, the reports she's already provided before today just to kind of get a first, you know, not an accounting level detail, but just kind of a first glance at where we might be seeing revenue losses based on the data that she's provided. So let me. Find that. Okay, so again, Ms. Gregory's reports provided data from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and two thousand and twenty. And of course, this ARP funding, as Mr. Spoonmore mentioned, can be used for these allowable expenses all the way through 2024. So it's, it's really important to know that so far we only know what we've seen, the losses we've seen in 2020. And whatever we, however we choose to move forward in using the ARP funding. I want to make you sure that I think it's, it's highly prudent that we reserve some for potential future revenue losses, particularly in revenue sources that are lagged, like a local income tax. We just don't, we, we did not see a local income tax drop in 2020, 2021, and we didn't expect to because of the way that lid is structured. But we certainly should make sure that any plan we adopt can accommodate potential losses in 2022 and 2023, if there are any. And maybe we'll, you know, we'll be lucky and, and there aren't. So the, the decreases from 2020, or 2019 to 2020 that really stood out probably are not gonna come as a, as a surprise to anybody. All I did here is just look at the fund level information, which is what we had before about four o'clock today. So though, though, I think we're going to need to do some additional analysis. But the ones that, the losses that really struck out is almost certainly related to the pandemic included MVH. So we clearly lost highway funding that could have been used to, to pave our roads. We we lost money that would have gone into investments in in our parks and maintaining our our park equipment. We've seen some small reduction in aviation, a couple of aviation capital funds. And then, of course, the other big one that we is not going to come as a surprise to anybody is about a $1.1 million reduction in the inkeeper's tax. That's obviously by far the biggest reduction that we've seen that can be directly attributed to the pandemic. And then there's another, a number of other the funds that did see a reduction from 2019 to 2020. But this is where a more careful analysis is going to be needed. And there's also questions over whether the some of these funds that saw a loss would have even been used for for county operations. But where's some more detailed analysis? Let me just give a an example. We see, let's see, where is the parks? Parks and non-reverting operating is just purely a random example. They saw a reduction of $103,000 from 2019 to 2020. Where we need to go deeper is the would would some or most or even all of that revenue simply be spent then on services that they didn't have to provide? So, you know, they they may have seen a reduction in revenue from programs, but on the other hand, they didn't have to pay the people to give them the program. So that's why some of these are really going to be needed to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. Another example is Convention Center Operations. Since it's not inkeeper's tax, this would be the operational revenue they get from providing services. Well, yeah, they see a reduction in that. How much of that, though, do they then just not have to pay for caterers and food and other other things that they would have paid for in providing the service? So again, we and then then there's another case, some of our tax funds like general, health, and aviation. We need to actually look at the individual revenue. So for example, general, the general fund overall saw a pretty substantial increase for a variety of reasons, including CARES Act money, but also just because our general fund is relatively healthy. But there may be some specific revenue lines that had had seen a substantial decrease due to due to the pandemic. One example, just I got just from glancing at the materials that Ms. Gregory sent us today was in interest income that just absolutely plummeted. So that's that's one. Health and aviation, you know, overall, the the health fund saw a slight decrease in from 2020 to 2019. But some of that, or even all of that reduction, may have been choices that the council made and allocated to the tax rate. So we need to disambiguate the the tax rate allocation, levy allocation that we did from potential reduction in some of the miscellaneous revenue lines. So I think we now have a lot of that information from Ms. Gregory's materials that she provided today that we can continue this analysis and go a little further. One other fund that stood out in my mind was the West Side TIP that that we actually saw $900,000 reduction from 2020 to 2019 to 2020. But in just brief conversation with Ms. Gregory, she mentioned that at least some of that may have been due to a late either a late settlement or a late late payment or late deposit made after the year into that fund. So we need to, again, look at that in more detail. And then, of course, there's the food and beverage tax for the county. We know that that saw a revenue decrease of $318,000. But on the other hand, that money was not used to provide or is not earmarked or allocated for general from for county operations, for government operations. So we have to be, I think, kind of careful about what we what we would attempt to recover. At least that's just my opinion. So I think that's all I have for the moment, but we've now received some additional information. We can continue this analysis.
Counselor Hawke, did you have a question?
A couple of comments. The West Side TIP, you know, that's all tied to the Richland tax rate. And that school tax rate, you know, we had one where it went way up and then it dropped way back down. And that tax rate then is what you use to bring in the money for the tip. So then it went back up this year. Did you remember that? That there was that mistake? And and so that would have changed the tax rate that was used for the West Side TIP.
The office I know is looking specifically into that into that fund.
Right. I think that's that will give you a big, a big revelation there. And the other thing is with the per diem, you know, it just like they were trying to reduce the number of of young people staying there because of COVID. But we would expect it to go back up. And also, this is another time when we need to look at that because it's once again, it's a juvenile per diem. And we've worked very hard to make sure that everybody understands that is get that's money that can be used for any purpose whatsoever. It's not tied to uses for the youth shelters simply because they have a tremendous source of revenue from that income tax. And they it's a so we want to make sure that doesn't get spent down on something else because we sort of been using it for detention dollars.
So in any case, I think we at least this should give everybody an idea of what kinds of revenue losses we're seeing and what kinds we're not seeing so far.
Right. Good job.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McKim. I'm going to go back here to just the final couple of slides that I have. Can you all see that? Okay, so we'll just quickly touch on this last slide. Some recommendations and guidance that experts are providing to local government leaders as we formulate a strategic plan for the ARP resources that we're about to receive. I think we can all agree that we want to maximize each and every opportunity available to us through the American Rescue Plan and beyond. So going back to the information that was presented by Bruce Katz and AIC, Mr. Katz is urging community leaders to work together to identify, share goals, and then match those goals to the various funding streams that we'll have access to. In particular, community leaders and partners may want to think outside the box and thinking regionally to examine every source of funding available rather than just relying upon or focusing on a single source. Thinking too small may very well result in missed opportunities for us, which we would want to avoid that. And as you can see here, Mr. Katz recommends that local leaders focus on these five points when formulating a plan to deploy the resources. And I think these recommendations could easily be tailored to our local plans here in Monroe County. And I hope we can continue discussing how we can do that as we go through the go through the process over the next weeks and months. And it could provide a good framework for how we can approach decision-making and maximizing these resources for the community and in the region as well. And so this next slide is really just some questions that we kind of came up with that we thought would be good for discussion this evening. I think some some kind of pertinent things that we should we should be thinking about. Just to start, what are council members and commissioners' initial thoughts on what Monroe County government's priorities should be for its share of ARP funding? How and when will Monroe County County's plan and spending details be developed so that the goals of of all of us can be achieved? How will the council manage appropriations to ensure accountability and oversight? So the funds are used in accordance with with the ARP and the ordinance and the plan? And you know, this is bigger than Monroe County government. How can Monroe County coordinate, communicate with other community partners who, you know, may independently access funds that are in addition to those made available to the local units in order to maximize possible funding? So just kind of wanted to throw those out there. We can discuss that. We can discuss anything else that would be relevant that's on your minds regarding ARP? And just wanted to have kind of talk about next steps and any other questions that people might have. Who would like to go first? I see our auditor has joined us. Welcome.
Thank you. Would you like me to speak a little bit about about the auditing situations? Because I see that's one of your points.
Yeah, why don't Mr. McKim had his hand up. Why don't we check with, and then we'll, I do want to, you know, get to those points as well, too. Let's check with Ms. McKim here first, and then we can come back.
My question is mostly a process question. And that's, I kind of want to confirm that my understanding is that we need to, or the commissioners need to pass this resolution that or ordinance that references a plan and creates the the fund, but that the the details of the plan can then be evolved over time? And that the idea is you don't you don't come up with a complete and comprehensive and detailed plan from the beginning, but that you evolve it over time as discussions proceed? Is that is that kind of the correct understanding of the process?
That's how I understand as well, too. We might want to check in with Margie Rice and get her take.
Yes, that is right. The initial the initial presentation that State Board of Accounts gave, and I know that County Attorney Jeff Cockrell watched that. I believe Kim Shell watched it as well. They did emphasize the fact that your ordinance and your plan can be updated over time. After all this funding, you have until 2024 to spend it. Because the very fact that they require a plan, it's indicated that really it's supposed to be sort of a strategic, long-term truly sort of a marathon rather than a sprint. This is different than the CARES funding, which was really kind of to address emergency situations. And the idea was to get out there quickly and and address things. This is really intended to be a very thoughtful, I've heard it referenced almost as a once-in-a-generation opportunity. So to be really sort of strategic and thoughtful.
Counselor Hawke, yes.
Yes, I believe I was in that training session as well. And wasn't there supposed to be an example of what the ordinance could look like that was going to be sent to us? Was that State Board of Accounts or DLGS? Someone was going to send us an example of how we could do it. Need to make sure.
Yes, it's AIC. AIC was coming up with an example ordinance.
Right. Good. Come back and and be and reference back to what it says we have to do.
But that's just an example. We can do whatever really.
Doesn't have to be specific.
Yes, that's correct. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Bill Foss.
It's in our Dropbox. So that example is in the shared Dropbox, but we can certainly email it out as well. So you can take a look at it.
And it looks like Ms. Gregory will forward that on to Counselor Hawke, she mentioned in the notes there. And so I guess that kind of leads to the question, do we have a timeline for when the ordinance will be adopted?
I do not. I don't know if Jeff Cockrell is still on this call. He might be able to address that. If not, Angie and the commissioners may be able to talk about when they're thinking about doing it.
I thought they said tomorrow.
Is it tomorrow?
We still haven't seen the exact things that have come out from Treasury yet in terms of the guidance. So I personally, I'm not going to speak for all the commissioners, but I personally would like to see that exact guidance before we create something.
Okay, so there's no immediate plan to adopt the ordinance for right now?
So we're going to wait on, sorry, this is Julie, we're going to wait on legal advice on that. But I I know that, you know, we meet every Wednesday. So getting this onto our agendas, you know, and the initial, from my understanding, the initial ordinance is going to be very general, and then we'll dive into details later. So I think when Legal's ready, we'll be ready to talk about it and consider it. So it won't, it won't be a long process for us.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. McKim.
Just curious to hear from my colleagues and the commissioners, you know, about what kind of venue, what kind of format do they do they think would be the best way for us to work hand in hand with collaboratively with the commissioners to come up with the spending priorities? Since the commissioners will presumably need to improve them and present those those priorities. And we need to incorporate. I think we're both, I guess, yeah, I'd just like to hear what you all think.
I I think Legal is going to give us some good advice on that. I think, Mr. McKim, you raise a really good point. I I think we are going to work together as as we have on everything else that we're doing, like the bond today. And that's going to be important going forward, and we're all in on that. I think that Legal will be our guide, and I think it's going to depend on how the feds release information and when they do so. But personally, I agree that our number one, for me personally, the number one priority is replacing lost revenue. That's that's got to be our, because that's, you know, for me, that's that's what this was intended to do first and foremost. And then we can, we can look at projects once we've determined what that is and what that looks like.
Mr. Iverson, did you have a question?
I did. I did. And I just wanted to reiterate that the importance of working together. I think we've shown that we can work together and we do it very well. And the only addition that I would add to Mr. McKim and Commissioner Thomas's statement is I know the public is very interested in this and the public is very interested in knowing what we're doing. So again, transparency, I think, is going to be very important here as well so that we're not seen as, you know, operating, you know, in a bubble. But I'm eager also to hear advice from from Legal on how to do that.
Okay, Auditor Smith, yeah.
Yes, okay, a couple of points. First of all, the money should be here around May 11th. And at that time, we have to have our ordinance in place to receive the money. And that's one thing. Now, the second thing is.
The ordinance or the fund? Just have to have the fund. We don't have to.
Fun, but they, but State Board of Accounts is advising us to have the ordinance in place when the money comes. That's what they're telling us as auditors. So if you'd like Breida to investigate that close more closely, she certainly can, but that's what they're telling us. What you guys basically saw probably was the AIC presentation in joint with the with the State Department Account. But we see a lot of stuff in the background that that just basically the auditors see. And so that's what they they're asking us to do. Also, I understand the commissioners are, of course, very, very concerned about revenue loss. When we look at revenue loss up to this point, it's not been near what we would have thought a year ago. So so I want to make sure that the plan is flexible enough so that if we don't have, if we don't have the revenue loss that people seem to think that we're going to have, that we can use the money on other important projects. So when we talk about, when we talk about the reports that we have to give back to the feds, it's not necessary that we have to measure benchmarks, but we just have to use the money the way that we say we're going to use it. So if we if we do make our plan flexible and, you know, then then when we do report it, if it's, if the differentiation is is extreme, as long as all those guidelines. And, you know, Margie and Jeff are are sharp cookies. So are the commissioners. So I believe that we can, they will construct something that will make that happen. But I don't want anybody to to really get hung up on exactly how much this will be and exactly how much that will be. Right now, the revenue loss that we're seeing is very minimal compared to other counties. I mean, absolutely amazingly so. However, I speak with the other auditors, you know, we work are working very hard together to to figure out, you know, the priorities in spending this money. Of course, it's different in different counties, but we do stay in touch every single day on that subject. A lot of counties were not prepared for the CARES money. We did an excellent job of taking care of the CARES money, both from the commissioners end and, and from Bree's end and the, you know, the auders end and, and also from the decision-making end. And of course, we can't really do anything in the auditor's office until you guys make your decisions on how you want to spend this money. But the, what they present to us gives us a lot of options and a lot of flexibility. So it just makes sense that we would, we would, you know, work that option, you know? We would, we would build the plan so that if we did not see the revenue loss, we could still use the money for other important projects. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Deckard, yes.
Thank you very much. I think I myself am a lot, like a lot of members of the public and maybe a few of you in that we are very much learning about this process and we're figuring this process out. And we're at the tail end of, no, I don't want to say tail end because I'm going to mess that up for us. But we're, we're, we're at a substantial portion into this pandemic. And hopefully we're heading for a quick tail end. But we have done a lot of cooperating and a lot of work together over the last year, and I think that's awesome. I think the timing and the implement, implementation of this in the federal legislation, the way it is written, the way that we are understanding it and doing it, gives us some time to make wise decisions. And I think when we talk about revenue laws, that hopefully we have time to assess all the revenue loss that the community has impacted. I've been impacted by, I, I think that we have people that we've not quite heard their story because they are surviving every day with this. Whether it's a kid on their lap and a job in their hands and iPad or whatever. I think there's a lot of that going on, a lot of our parents, a lot of housing issues, workforce issues. And like Jeff, Counselor McKim said exceedingly well, we don't know when the tail end of this quite manifests and what it manifests like. And so I like that this gives us time. I do think that we need to think about the most public processes we can do so that the public has an ability to say, hey, look, you are not aware of this that we do and this how we've suffered. And maybe county can assist with that. And that's hard. But there's been nothing about this that's hard and we're county government. We do hard every day. So in any regards, I just, just some thoughts that I have there. I think that we've got a lot to figure out. We got a minute to do it. Got people that we got to figure out how to do it for, and hopefully we can do it. I, for one, also want to say I'm so grateful to Counselor Spoonmore for opening up these questions and this discussion and taking us through that because sometimes in all of this, you don't really look at those kind of principles, those sorts of things that we have, and it really puts into perspective where you have to start with this. And also Counselor McKim's explanation of sort of where we're at and, and I appreciate the auditor's words as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munson and then Ms. Hawke.
I wanted to comment on something I think is important for all of us to keep in mind. And that is there are multiple sources of funding from other federal programs and also from state programs that relate to some priorities that we may develop in our community. And I'll just give one example. Increasing broadband, especially to the rural areas and the importance of this, both economically and for the education of our children. We know it's important, but there, I'm reading about multiple ways to get there. And so this is, it's going to be important to actually track the different programs that are not just the ARP.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
Ms. Hawke.
Yes, I think I'm glad we're not having to do quick decisions because this is going to take a lot of concentration, working together. But I think we have to remember that we don't want to pedal it away. We want to make sure that it is something impactful that will really make a difference to the people of this community. And also that it's not, that we have to recognize it, it has to be like a one-time kind of expense because we can't grow our budget with it. And then when we, when that's gone, how do we continue to do what, what we started? So I think the public's going to help us with a lot of their suggestions. But it's important that we understand what the rules are because it's clear we have to pay it back if we spend it in ways that we're not allowed to.
Yeah, good point. Ms. Wiltz.
Well, first I wanted to echo the thanks for putting together your presentation and, and the data sheet. Both of you, thank you so much because, you know, we're all privy to the same information, but we're not all as good at parsing through or thinking clearly through it necessarily. So I really appreciate that and I think this is time well spent. And I think we're all, we're all interested in kind of the same things, working together, transparency, making sure we think things through and making sure that what we decide to do is something sustainable going forward. I also wanted to emphasize the point that Counselor Spoonmore's slides kind of incorporated, which was that opportunity to collaborate beyond just our, just county government. And I think it's important that we make sure that we don't limit our plan or our thinking to just Monroe County government and programs. Um, I think this is a great opportunity to partner with the other, the other people working in our area toward making our community better. So I'll just leave it at that. The broader we can think on that front, I think the better. And I'm happy to work with whoever's willing to, to, you know, talk on some of these things. I'm excited about it.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Wiltz. And I think you're, you're absolutely right. You know, the, there's going to be, I think, a lot of crossover that we see, not only with, you know, other units of government in Monroe County, the city and the county, for example, or the, the county and the townships or, you know, whatever intergovernmental relations are there, but also at the regional level, too. And so, you know, my vision for this really is to, you know, have Monroe County be the shining example in the state of Indiana for how to really effectively deploy these resources. And so that's, that's our big challenge and I look forward to working with you all and with the commissioners and with our partners in the community to, to help us achieve that goal. One of the things that, you know, I think some others have mentioned, I know Mr. Iverson and Ms. Hawke, and maybe some others as well. But, you know, getting, for me, it's, it's going to be important also to include a meaningful mechanism for capturing public input on this as well, too. And, you know, really understanding what the community needs are and hearing it from them. And so using that as, as also a guide for decision-making, I think will be really important. I've been surprised that, you know, some, some people have heard from, from others more in the community. I've been surprised at how little I've heard from constituents about the American Rescue Plan, considering how massive this funding package is. It is surprising to me, you know, that, that I'm not hearing a whole lot of people asking questions about it yet. I haven't really seen, I, I know it's relatively recent announcement, but hopefully as more of this gets published and, and the media and, and spaces where people are looking for it, that, that'll raise the attention levels and we'll start to get that feedback from the community. Because this is going to be really important for me to really understand what the community is interested in with this as well, too. And also, I want to say thank you so much to Margie Rice and Kim Shell. They've been tremendously helpful up to this point, just getting me up to speed. I know answering lots of questions, attending these presentations, really becoming the Monroe County experts on what this, this huge legislation involves. And so thanks so much for all the preparation work for, for this presentation and, and all the help and assistance. And I know that that will continue to be the case going forward as well, too, but it's, it's been very, very helpful. Yes, Kim.
I'm just wondering if you would want to take any public comment at this time, if there's any.
We have. That, that would be, yeah, if we have any. It looks like we do. Mr. Shelton, yes, welcome.
Thank you, Council. Jim Shelton with the chamber. I just want to say I'm very impressed with the way you guys are starting off on this. You've all contributed. I couldn't agree more with the things Ms. Munson and Mr. Hawke said, Ms. Wiltz. And your, your chart, your view graphs, I think cooperation with the other entities around here is very important. And quite frankly, I'm very disappointed that the city is doing their discussion of this at the same time you guys are. I don't think that's a really good start. But if you guys would take the lead, I hope, and reach out to them and to the townships and then to some of the not-for-profits and other entities. And then regionally, I mean, our water supply, my goodness, is regional with at least five counties. And some, there's a lot of worry about how long that's going to last if we don't do some things differently. So I'm very impressed with where you guys have started and I thank you so much for it. And I encourage you to keep doing it and thanks for leading us.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shelton. Okay. Any other public comment? Does not appear so. So that, I, I think this was a very worthwhile discussion. Again, appreciate all the input and this is, this is just the beginning of this process. And we'll continue to, to refine things as we work with, with our colleagues and the, on the board of commissioners and beyond on how we're going to effectively put these resources to use. Counselor Hawke?
I guess, and I might have missed it, but I saw the reminder here. If anybody remembered to thank Brianna Gregory in the auditor's office, she is amazing and she's really been so helpful. I, no matter what you ask her, she'll say, I'll get that right for you. And she does. And she has it right at her fingertips. So what she's, what she's been through to get us through on the CARES money and keeping track of that, and now she feels confident she's going to be able to do this. It's, it's wonderful to have county employees that really give it their all. So between her and, and Kim Shell and the council office and everybody working together, I have great hopes.
Yes, well, thank you. Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and close this discussion out if it's okay with the commissioners, if they have anything else. They can, we'd be happy to continue, but I think that on our side of things, we're, we're finished. Any, anything further? It looks like Ms. Githens and Ms. Jones is your, yes, Ms. McKim.
Actually, as soon as this discussion is over, I apologize, but I'm actually out on, and, and the Rockies and a, and a work trip and I need to actually return to work. So when this discussion closes, I apologize, but I do have to depart. It's been an excellent discussion.
Thank you. See you, Jeff.
Thanks.
All right. Are the commissioners good?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thanks again. Thanks again for joining us and we'll look forward to future conversations.
This has been really useful for us. Thank you for allowing us to work on this together.
Yeah, our pleasure. Thank you. All right. So we will now move on to, are we on here? Item 10.
I'm here. I really am. Council, I move to open discussion and approval for Resolution 2021-18, which is a resolution to clarify procedures for filling vacancies in full-time positions.
Motion. And we got a lot of people muted.
We, we need.
Second.
And we got, we got a motion in a, in an audible second. I think there were several inaudible seconds. All right. So Ms. Rice, welcome.
Thank you. I.
Provide a little background since our last, or update since our last discussion about this.
Sure. So you're looking at a modified resolution. At the last meeting, you guys talked about it. You had the good sense, I think, to reach out to department heads and say, hey, what do you think about this? What's, what's your feedback? We got some good feedback and I modified the resolution accordingly. While there might have been some department heads who wish this resolution would go away completely, I'm here to say that you would be shirking your statutory responsibilities. I think if you didn't have a resolution like this, so I did try to work into this version of the resolution that you see, an explanation of what it is that the council does and why you have to understand vacancies and where they exist. Because you are the sole entity under state law that gets to fix the number of positions, to describe the duties, to classify positions. And so if you don't understand where there are vacancies, if you can't proactively work with departments to determine if they still like the job description the way it is, or if they want it tweaked, if they see an opportunity in their department for efficiencies or changes. If you don't know that vacancies exist, you're not going to be able to have those conversations. You just don't have the information you need. We've talked a lot tonight about data and I think this is part of the data that the council needs. You need to know when vacancies occur, not because you're trying to micromanage departments, not because you want to put yourself in the place of another elected official, but because you're trying to do your job and you're trying to understand what's going on so you can have those really important conversations and keep Monroe County moving forward. So I tried to craft this resolution to help hopefully make that clear. And also, you know, just to address some of the concerns that you guys have, some of the concerns departments, departments had. And if you have any questions about this revised version, I'm happy to try to answer them as well. And I know that Kim Shell's been really involved in this as well. And she's, she's heard from a lot of departments, so she can answer questions as well.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from Counsel, Ms. Hawke? Yes.
Sorry, I know it's getting late. Well, I want to do something else. However, I think it's real important when we are notified that there is a vacancy, that with that information comes similar to what we discussed this evening, where part of it was in a grant, part of it was in county general, wherever. So that we'll see what the balances are and remember, somebody may say, well, let me replace this grant person and maybe their grant's about to run out. And then, you know, then you've hired somebody and, and there's no money to pay them. So in general, I think most department heads watch that pretty carefully, but we should be watching it. We should know. So and not just liaison. Everybody should know at the same time.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Deckard?
I saw some of the feedback that came in and I, I think if there's anyone here, I, well, let me just say, I appreciate Ms. Rice making the adjustments to the resolution and also her, her words just now that remind us of our duties and, and why we do this. I do think that if there are any department heads that would be here now and want to say something that maybe we, if we could get those public comments, I think that would be exceedingly helpful. If there's none or they don't want to talk about it, that's fine, too. But I think it'd be good to afford that if we could.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Any, from counsel, are there any other questions or comments?
I just concur with Counselor Deckard. I was just going to say the same thing. I want to hear from people if they're here.
Yep. All right. So we will see if there's any public comment or any, we'll, we'll consider it public comment, but even if you're internal to Monroe County government, feel free to speak up. Do we have anybody interested? If so, please raise your hand. Doesn't appear that we do. But I will also mention that I appreciate all the work that Michelle and Ms. Rice put into this. I think the outcome is a good one. It took into account and we received a, a pretty substantial amount of feedback from, from the departments and I appreciate that. That's good. We need to hear feedback on these things when it affects them. But we were able to incorporate some of those modifications into the policy and that I, that I hope and think will make people's lives a little bit easier, but you know, also allows us to continue performing the functions that we're responsible for as well too. So I'll be supporting it and I hope, hope everyone else will as well. So if there's nothing further, we will do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve resolution 2021-18, Counselor Spoonmore.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero.
Okay, thank you. And up next is our standing item on boards and commissions. Just one thing to mention here with this, we did have a resignation of Jill Ferguson from the women's commission. So we have a vacancy that will need to be filled there. So if anybody has potential nominees for a future meeting or even tonight, I, I don't think we have any applications that have been submitted, but if anybody has any nominees in mind, have them fill out an application. And we'd be happy to consider those at a future meeting. And all right, we, we don't have any minutes tonight, do we? Okay. So we're, we're just on to council comments at this point prior to adjournment. Do we have any council members who'd like to make closing remarks? Before we call it quits for the night. It's a long night. Yes, Ms. Munson.
Let me be very quick. Emergency management wishes to remind the public that this month is flash flood preparedness month. And this simply means if you see water in the road, don't drive across it. They're also wanting people to know that there is a blood drive ongoing that is this week, Thursday and Friday at the convention center in partnership with the Red Cross. And the date, the times are 10 to three on Thursday and two to seven on Friday. There is a blood shortage that they hope to make up.
Got it. Thank you, Counselor Munson. Any other council comments? Okay. Well, if there is nothing further, we'll adjourn for the evening. We'll see everybody at our next meeting, May 11th, for the May regular session meeting. Have a good night.